Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, September 26th, the meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 3:02 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Campbell. Thank you. Councilmember Kruber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
I am here.
And Councilmember Mallow.
Here.
Thank you. There are seven members present, Mr. Chair.
We have all seven members present in a quorum. Please join us in listening to the land acknowledgement and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Councilmember Denson, followed by a moment of silence dedicated to our men and women serving in the military overseas. Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and stewarded these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is one small step towards true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. Now, I'd like to invite all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We are now at Section 4, Approval of Our Agenda. If there is no objection, I would like to move the agenda around slightly in order to accommodate our public safety chiefs that are joining us for this meeting, who are here to speak to one item in particular. So, out of respect for their need to be back at their jurisdictions as quickly as possible, I would like to see if there's any objection to placing Section 9, Item 4. This is the item related to Salsan 911. It's Resolution 2023-138-S. I would like to place it above Section 8 ordinances, so it would be our first action item after Proclamations. Is there any objection to approving our agenda with moving that item, including moving that item up so we can accommodate our public safety chiefs? I'm not seeing any. Our agenda will stand approved, and Item 4, Resolution, Item 4 under Section 9, Resolution 2023-138-S, will be the first action item after our proclamation this afternoon. That does bring us to the consent agenda. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comment on any final action item. This does not include items placed on the consent agenda for introduction and scheduling. On today's consent agenda, there are three appointment resolutions for final hearing and one grant application for approval. And also during Sections 8 and 9 of the agenda, we will take public comment on each ordinance and resolution individually. And finally, under community forum, there will be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not on today's agenda. So we now have the consent agenda before us. We are at Section 5. Does any member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Here.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Yes, I'd like to move Items 2A and 2C to Section, I believe it is, Section 9. And then I would like to approve the consent agenda with those amendments of moving 2A and 2C to Section 9.
Second.
It's been properly moved and signed that we adopt the consent agenda by removing Items 2A and 2C and moving those to Section 9 of our agenda. Are there any other wishes to move any item off the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any. There is, this is a public hearing on the final action items on our agenda. Any member of the public wish to provide comment on any final action item on our consent agenda? We'll ask you to come to the podium and state your name for the record. Anyone wishing to provide comment on any final action item? I'm not seeing any in chambers. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on the final actions, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star 9 on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring you back to the council. The vote is on the consent agenda without Items 2A and 2C. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kruber.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to Section 6 of our agenda, messages from the executive, our judges and prosecuting attorney. We have a message from the executive transmitting the following ordinances, which were approved and signed on September 21st, 2023. They included Ordinance Number 2023-34, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council authorizing several properties to be placed in open space classification under the current use assessment. There was also Ordinance Number 2023-35 that was signed into law. This was a ordinance of the Pierce County Council that changed the county code regarding executive departments and elective directors to include who is able to accept the processing of legal service when we're being served, usually for litigation, and designate certain people in the county auditor's office to authorize acceptance of that legal service. And finally, Ordinance Number 2023-38 was signed by the executive, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council repealing Chapter 9.12 of the Pierce County Code titled Attempted Suicide, no longer making attempted suicide a misdemeanor crime. Those are the three ordinances that were signed into law. That does bring us to Section 8 of our agenda, Proclamations, Recognitions, and Awards. Today's proclamation is proclaiming the week of October 2nd through the 8th, 2023, as Week Without Driving in Pierce County. I would like to invite our participants, Crystal Monteros, co-founder of Empower Movement, Cecilia Black, organizer with the Disability Mobility Initiative, and Madi Loetz, who's a student in our community. I'd like to invite you to the podium, and I'd like to invite Councilmember Hitchens to read our proclamation into the record. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. A proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the week of October 2nd through the 8th, 2023, as a Week Without Driving in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas in 2021, the Disability Mobility Initiative launched the Week Without Driving campaign to challenge our leaders to better understand the barriers non-drivers experience in accessing our communities. And after two successful years of hosting the challenge in Washington State, Week Without Driving is going national in partnership with America Walks this year. And whereas about 25% of the population cannot or do not drive, which means 1 in 4 people depend on public transit and people they know to get around. And whereas public transportation and a strong network of sidewalks and bike paths aren't available in every community here in Pierce County, making it much more difficult to get around, visit family and friends, and take care of everyday tasks for those who cannot or do not drive. And whereas, more than 50 advocacy groups from across 30 U.S. states are planning to join the challenge October 2 through October 8 to gain a deeper appreciation of what those who go without driving deal with daily, along with better understanding of public transportation needs and traffic calming measures that can help make traveling safer. And whereas, improvements in walking and bike paths can improve alternate forms of mobility in communities across Pierce County and our state, and public driver education initiatives can help educate drivers to have patience and understanding for those traveling by means other than a vehicle. And whereas, participating in the Week Without Driving Challenge will bring more awareness and understanding to leaders and the community about how the lack of adequate transportation can impact people's ability to work, see doctors and make appointments, access education and childcare, procure goods and services, recreate and entertain in our own community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this 26th day of September 2023 by the Pierce County Council that October 2 through 8, 2023, is recognized as the Week Without Driving in Pierce County, Washington, and residents are encouraged to use public transportation, walk, ride a bike, or use ride-sharing options to include carpooling for their everyday travel needs this week. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Let's give them a round of applause. Well, Crystal, Cecilia, and Madi, thank you for being with us. We'd love to hear some remarks from you.
Yes, thank you. So I'm Crystal Monteros, and I just want to thank you guys for, one, doing this, and just from my own personal experience, I was born as a wheelchair user. I was born with spina bifida, so I started taking public transportation myself, I want to say, like, the sixth grade. And I was born and raised in California, but I was taking public transportation to school for one. And, yeah, I just, I relied on just the buses, taxis, and all that, and to this day I still do. And now taking public transportation over here is different than California. I've been saying that. But I don't think those who are driving, you know, realize that even though they may see a bus, they may see a bus stop, they don't realize how inaccessible a lot of the bus stops and a lot of the sidewalks and, you know, crosswalks, just everything that goes together is for the average wheelchair user, and even those who are blind, those who are using walkers, all of that, even those who are deaf. You know, people don't realize, even a person who's deaf, if they're crossing the street, how do they know that the crosswalk says to cross if it, if they can't hear it? You know, a lot of people don't realize that stuff. You know, it has to be completely accessible to everyone, you know, when it comes to electric vehicles. That's another thing that we advocate for. When it comes to electric vehicles, how does a person who is deaf even hear an electric vehicle if they're so silent? That puts them in danger. You know, so that's all what we're going towards for a Week Without Driving. You know, because even, again, towards the electric vehicles, if you're, you know, so busy with your kids and, you know, walking down the street, yes, you are walking, but how do you hear an electric vehicle coming with your kids? You know, like, we want people to experience all that and just have to go through what we go through because we have to go through it and we have no choice. You know, like, other people have a choice, we don't. So it may seem like it's nothing to everybody else, but it's our only choice. That's the whole point of the Week Without Driving. And I just, I thank you guys again for, you know, putting this into play, but it's just to kind of open everybody else's eyes to just, there are the, one, the lower-class community, and two, the people with disabilities that have no other option. You know, like, because I'm always going to be in it, sure, there's no changing that. So I just, I appreciate y'all for doing that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Black, and I'm an organizer with Disability Mobility Initiative, and just want to say on behalf of Disability Rights Washington, thank you for showing that you take this challenge, this Week Without Driving, seriously. As our transportation policy has been written for decades and decades for drivers and by drivers, and as a result, we have left, created a transportation system that's left non-drivers behind. And as Councilmember Hitchens said, at least 25% of people in Washington are non-drivers, whether they're older or younger, or disabled, or don't have the economic means to drive. And so this, this Week Without Driving is so important because it gives, especially our policymakers, an opportunity to experience what it's like to not rely on a car. And it's one thing to understand the policy issue on paper or to see it as a budget item, but there is just invaluable knowledge and experience in the non-driving community that comes from experiencing our whole complete transit system from buses to sidewalks and trains. And so this is an opportunity to challenge everybody in the community, not just our elected officials, but to experience what it's like to not rely on a car. And I also just want to emphasize that the point of this challenge is not to not drive, it's to experience the stress and the strain of having to make a meeting or get to your son's soccer practice or doctor appointment using transit or using sidewalks, and what it's like when that's unavailable, but also to experience, hopefully, like, the ease when public transit works, whether that's a network of sidewalks, or a bus line, or a bike path. And we hope that you all will take this challenge, and if you do have to drive, really think about why you have to drive and why, what barriers are there that make it impossible for you to get to where you need to go without a car, and that you will remember this challenge throughout the year, as I know you'll be making difficult budget and policy decisions, that this will help influence your choices and hopefully keep transit, accessible transit, equitable transit as a priority as you move through this year. Thank you.
Thank you for those remarks. Madi, did you want to share anything?
Hi, my name is Madi Loetz. I was born three and a half months premature. I have retinopathy of prematurity, so I not only do not feel comfortable with driving, but I probably will never really legally safely be able to drive. I live in northeast Tacoma on the border of Federal Way, so the closest transit system is, for me, is the Federal Way Transit Center. I think that, you know, making the Week Without Driving a national, a national event, or at least, or at least a state event, is super important on the basis of, you know, on the basis of empathy related to how people, you know, with various disabilities, or older-aged folks, or people who may not afford, may not be able to afford a car, who may financially rely on public transportation. This would, I think, really open people's eyes, not so much as a, you know, oh, you know, look how challenging this is, but it really helps people say, oh, more, there actually is a lot of people who rely on public transportation. Some people, I know some people who I've talked to in my neighborhood, you know, assume that they, we don't need as many bus systems because I don't rely on transportation like that, that's not an important budget thing. And I think having this week of non-driving and just challenging people to step out of their comfort zone and, you know, possibly be able to get, step into somebody else's shoes and what they experience could be a really powerful thing. So I thank you for really considering this, and I really appreciate the work that you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Thank you, all three of you, for sharing your stories and why the Week Without Driving is important. I like it, I'd like to open it up to other council members for any final remarks. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for being here and making the trek, because I know, unlike me, who got in my car from my house this morning and it was slightly raining, you ended up coming in the middle of a deluge and had to navigate getting here, and that just creates all kinds of barriers. And just thinking about how you go from point A to point B when you have to depend on public transit, if there's public transit, so that's the first thing, creates so many just additional complications in someone's life, things that I, until I did the Week Without Driving last year, I just really didn't think about. It was the, I'm out of creamer and tomorrow morning is going to suck, how do I get it? Right? Like, that is such a simple thing, and yet, if I didn't have a car and I didn't have the ability for me to do that from my home, would have, we have some options, but it took a whole bunch of, like, thinking about what time of day is it? Is there a bus? Is it safe? Am I walking on my own? And then what else do I need to buy? If I need to buy dog food, my 100-pound dog eats a lot, so how do I get that? Like, I legitimately had no idea. Can I take a 100-pound bag of dog, or a dog, well, it is about 50 pounds, on the bus? And how does that work? What if I need other groceries? And it's such a simple thing that I took for granted until I did the challenge. So we'll see how this week goes. We'll see what other things are uncovered, but I think it's just really impactful. And for those that live in communities that do not have transportation, go to a community that does have transportation, take the bus somewhere. Try it. Go on a bike ride and just see what it's like to ride on our roads. If you don't have a bike, go for a walk in an area that you haven't walked in before. And just see what it's like to kind of be in the space and on the roads, and what it's like when you're not in a car. And there's a huge kind of change in how you think about moving around our community when you are not in a car. And it's not just the rain, it's all the things. So I appreciate you being here and being part of this, and we are going to take a picture. We have a plan, everybody on the council. I did think about this, so thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Chair, and Councilmember Hitchens. I echo everything that she said. I just want to thank you all for coming and sharing your stories and your experience, because I think this is really illustrating how important it is to hear from people who have firsthand experience in a variety of things in life. And your firsthand experience dealing with and maneuvering through the city, through the county with disabilities is providing some insight to us that we may not normally have, right? We all have these different lenses, and when we're considering different policies, if we don't hear stories, we don't hear firsthand accounts, if we're not hearing the thoughts and opinions of people with firsthand experience, with disabilities, for example, we may not, we may not think of things in our policies, and we may have unintended consequences, and we may not be making policies that are as good as they could be. So it's really important, you know, whether you're here providing public testimony, whether you're keeping an eye on other policies that we're passing through the county, whether you're serving on a board or commission, we've got those for folks with disability as well. This is really, really valuable information, to hear your voices. And examples, the electrical, electric vehicle thing. I was like, what do electric vehicles have to do with people with disabilities? I would never have thought of that. And to Councilmember Hitchens' point, we often invite people up here to take pictures. Well, we've got stairs on both sides. So just by you being here, it's opening our eyes, and we should be thinking through these issues more, and we're really trying to, but having you all here to really tell us what it's really like, and then encouraging us to go experience it for ourselves, which even makes more of an impact, is really, really valuable to us as policymakers, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? Well, I too want to thank you for being here, thank you for your very powerful stories that you're able to share with us. I just wanted to briefly also reflect, you know, thank you, Councilmember Hitchens, for bringing this forward again this year. I can, I can tell you that, you know, Councilmember Hitchens is very, she's serious, she takes the commitment seriously, she takes the challenge seriously, and the learning opportunity very seriously. And I remember last year, we were, we were doing a Week Without Driving, and we were trying to get to, I can't remember what, where we were trying to get to on South Orchard and somewhere, and it was a big, I ended up not making it because we were taking the challenge very seriously. I ended up not making it. You took four hours, apparently, to get to wherever we were going on South Orchard. We take the challenge seriously. And, you know, there's, as has been said by my colleagues, there's no replacement to personal experience, even if it's a week of an experience. There's no replacement, as all three of you said better than any of us can. Many folks in elected office, whatever our passion is, whatever our service is, is motivated by experience, right? I've, I get to work with these other six amazing individuals all the time, and I get to, I get to often hear what brought them to public service. It's often in experience, right? And whether it's frustrated about a permit, how long it takes to get a permit to build a house, or to open a business, or maybe it's someone's experience growing up in a rural environment, and that shines through in their public service, and how much they care deeply about rural heritage and protecting rural life and working farms and that sort of thing. Or someone's deep frustration with broadband and inability to run their, run their life because of inaccessibility and broadband. Someone then becomes a broadband, you know, advocate, or an advocate for rural life, rural life, or making a better permit system. All of it comes from experience, whatever, whatever it is, so that, you know, you and the other folks who are designing the Week Without Driving, creating that, just that one week of experience is so important. And, you know, even if each, I'm very fortunate, I live five blocks from here. I get to work, I get to walk to work every day. If my work isn't here at this building, I live in a pretty good walk shed and a pretty good transit shed, I'm able to navigate my way most of the time. And I'm of someone of means that if I have to, I can call a ride share, right? I have that privilege. Others don't, and some of my other colleagues don't have transit coming nearby their home at all that's miles away. I, as Councilmember Hitchens challenged us, even if your life doesn't enable, you listening or my, my friends and colleagues up here, if your life isn't able to have all seven days fully participate, like Councilmember Hitchens will, and I will strive to, pick a day or two during the week to just really walk in the shoes, because when we walk in other people's shoes, our eyes open like, like they just can't if we don't walk in other people's shoes. So that's my commitment, that's my challenge. Thank you for, thank you for being with us and for all that you do. I'm going to encourage all members to come down on the floor, and Mr. Dominique is going to organize us, and we're going to take a picture down here. Thank you everyone. For members' information, my intent in order to accommodate our guests here that are here for business, as we saw, we moved two appointments off the consent agenda so that we can meet these appointees. My intent is to take those appointees right after we take Resolution 138 S. So we'll take the appointees right after we consider this next resolution, if there's no objection. That does bring us to proposal R 2023-138 S for consideration. Councilmember Denson for a motion.
Thank you Chair, I move proposal number R 2023-138 S.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2023-138 S. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-138 S, a resolution of the Pierce County Council requesting the Pierce County Executive to work with the cities of Tacoma and Puyallup, South Sound 911, and Pierce County's public safety agencies to create a single unified radio system and agreed upon governance plan.
Thank you. Mr., so for, right, for the record, the title has been changed. It was the title that was read into the record. Mr. Bridges.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, the, the title is, accurately reflects the resolution. Under Section 1 of the resolution, the Pierce County Council requests the county executive work with cities of Tacoma and Puyallup as radio operators, South Sound 911 as a user and funding source, and Pierce County's public safety agencies as emergency service providers to create a single unified radio system and an agreed upon governance plan for Pierce County's emergency service providers. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Are there questions of Mr. Bridges before we open this up for a public hearing? I don't see any questions of Mr. Bridges. And Mr. Bridges, there are no amendments for us to consider here. We considered this in the Public Safety Committee yesterday, adopted an amendment in Public Safety Committee, and that's what's before us as amended today. So we'll open this up for a public hearing. Is there any member of the public wishing to provide comment on Resolution 2023-138 S? Please come to the podium, please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks. Chief Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council, appreciate you giving me this afternoon to speak to you for a couple of minutes. My name is Jim Sharp, Fire Chief for West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and I'm also currently the President of the Pierce County Fire Chiefs Association. This is a, this is a conversation that actually goes all the way back to 2011 in which a countywide tax was proposed to improve 911 dispatch as well as combine all of the first responder radio systems that we had in Pierce County. And the good news is we made progress. We came from six disparate systems and managed to combine that down to just two, but we never got all the way to a final consolidation of those last two, which were managed collectively by Pierce County, the City of Tacoma, and the City of Puyallup. Since then, we've been working from the Pierce County Fire Chiefs Association to try and get those, those final two systems consolidated and unified, and it has become a top priority for the association. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, with, with multiple systems like we have today, it creates daily challenges in the field for communications amongst our first responders. Depending on the areas they're in, they can be between the two systems, on the border of the two systems, and it creates a lot of confusions and challenges. As well as in the dispatch center where we have to have redundant dispatch positions just to monitor the different systems because they can't just monitor one system. Additionally, the other challenge that we have would be with, with three different operator groups in Pierce County, City of Tacoma, and, and City of Puyallup, there's actually different levels of service amongst the, the users of the systems. There's, excuse me, different costs among the users of the system. There's different coverage amongst which system and where you are in that system. So this has caused agencies over time to try and pick and choose where they can get the best cost or the best coverage or the best service. And this shouldn't be an open market where we have our first responders trying to move from one system to the other to try and make something better. We should be trying to make it better across the board for, for the whole community and for all the first responders. So moving to a single system with single governance has been a top priority for us. We believe that it improves overall operational safety, it improves the efficiency of our operations in the field. And by having one governance model, it gives us a single source and a single point of contact to go to that we can talk to about the efficiencies that we'd like to see, the improvements that we need, where we need to focus our energies to, to make the system work better across the board. So this is not, this is not a new concept, it's not a radical concept. Actually, I know most of you probably weren't in these positions back in 2011 or around that time, but at that time Pierce Transit and Pierce County both had disparate radio systems and they realized that they could work together and, and actually improve things. And so Pierce County and Pierce Transit came together, they unified that into a single system, and along the way, they created a single governance system to model, to manage that system. So it clearly works. It works today because that system is still up and running and exists today and it's one of the systems that we operate on. So again, I don't think this is a new concept, I think this is a great concept. I think it would definitely improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our first responders in the field. It would absolutely improve our overall safety in the field. And I just think it's responsible to our community to provide an efficient service that doesn't have redundancies that we're, we're funding, but, but it's funded in the most effective model possible. So I would definitely encourage you to support this and I thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you Chief. Chief Espinoza.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Oscar Espinoza, Grand Fire Rescue Fire Chief. I'd like to, first of all, compliment the council for the great work they've done in the resolution. Also, I'd like to thank Councilmember Krueger for reaching out and getting the Grand Fire and Rescue perspective on this matter. Just a couple of minutes to provide a Grand Fire and Rescue perspective on the split radio system, 700, 800. I imagine this perspective is not too different from the perspective of East Pierce Fire, Gig Harbor Fire, where we're out on the, you know, in the, the edges of the county where the 700, excuse me, the 800 system ends and the 700 begins. So I don't have anything new to offer, other than to maybe punctuate some of the challenges that we face from an emergency response, firefighter safety perspective, as well as an administrative complexity perspective, which I'll elaborate on. Beginning with our core emergency service work, you should know, again, that Grand Fire is a split district. So half of our district is dispatch on the 800 system, whereas the other half is dispatch on the 700 system. And again, as Chief Sharp mentioned and is written in your resolution, that creates safety hazards, it creates, in the heat of battle, the need to switch radio channels between 800 and 700. So again, nothing new, but punctuating how that complexity affects our firefighters and their ability to respond to, of course, our citizens in need. It is prone to error, you know, human error, where we can design systems without human error. We try to do that as leaders. Our firefighters are vulnerable when they're switching back and forth to these complex systems, results in communication breakdown, and of course, create safety issues for our firefighters, which I know we all care about. So moving on to the administrative complexity, you know, very minor in the grand scheme of thing, but nonetheless, the two-system design is very inefficient. Being a split radio district, we have 181 response zones in Gram, meaning that if you call 911 from, you know, said response zone, a dispatch is created. And in our district, and I believe in East Pierce and others, a dispatch is created with a radio frequency. And our, and sometimes that is not done correctly, and it also requires administrative work. As a matter of fact, as we speak and for some time now, some of our response zones are not working correctly. So every call that goes out, our members have to get on the radio with, with South Sound 911 and ask the channel to be changed. So with the little bit of time I have left, I would ask you to support in solidarity with the Pierce County Fire Chiefs this initiative. I thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you Chief Espinoza. Thank you for yours. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution? Please come to the podium, please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Steve McCoy. I wasn't prepared to comment on this, but my background is RF and microwave, it was what I did for a living. And I'd like you to imagine a minute that you have an emergency, you've got a CBA radio, you want to trial somebody on a cell phone, it's never gonna work. That's exactly what these gentlemen are saying, they need to have a coherent system where the technology works across the band. So in an emergency, you don't have somebody trying to get ahold of somebody else on a different frequency or a different band. So this is critical for the safety services that we're looking forward to provide. I would ask you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
Forty members of the public wish to provide comment on proposal number R 22, R, excuse me, R 2023-138 S. Press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you, see no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? We'll begin with Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this resolution. I would like to thank Councilmember Denson for bringing it forward. And it's been an interesting proposal. Immediately, you know, people's hair went, went up in flames and we ended up doing triage back and forth. And part of our job is to come up with a piece of legislation that kind of gives everybody what they want. And fortunately, we were able to, to do that. And I think, you know, we all want the same thing. I mean, we want a system that is usable, that connects our first responders, that allows everyone to operate within their venue separately, whether it be Greenwater or whether it be downtown Tacoma. So with that in mind, and as the chief said, this is not a new idea, this has been percolating for quite a few, few years. And it's been one of the priorities that the executive has had moving this system forward. And I do believe October 2nd, you have a meeting with Motorola to come out with at least a single radio system. The governance issue is always one that's the most challenging. I know, as a, in my previous life, I was a fire commissioner, and I had the privilege of merging fire districts together and forming Central Pierce. Chief Espinoza knows that it was Gram that bailed on us and decided to go on their own. So, but, you know, what goes around, you know, maybe comes around. And, but, the governance issue was the toughest issue, was wrangling power from jurisdictions. It's always a delicate process, and I think there again, we all want the same thing, we just need to allow process to take place. It doesn't mean that we need to take forever on it. Some prodding is in order. But I think the current plan that you've adopted does give everyone a pathway forward. And hopefully, we don't, and I don't think we are getting out in front of ourselves as a council on this. We support a governance plan that works for everyone involved, and, you know, we support the efforts because my constituency will benefit just as much as any other of the council member's constituency. So I support this resolution and, you know, I wish everyone luck moving forward. And maybe we should hire Mr. McCoy to put this...
Big dog.
Okay, after my speech, he decided to step away, smart man. So anyway, but thank you for the opportunity to comment and to support this. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Morrell. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you Chair, and I echo a lot what Councilmember Morrell said. And, you know, the single unified radio systems, a lot of work has been done to get to this point. Also, my previous life, and I talked about it in the Public Safety meeting yesterday, about situations where, you know, we have gaps in our, in our system or delays in, you know, getting the word out to where we need the emergency, the emergency people to be at. I mean, not just, but a few years ago, I was doing a patrol up in Pierce County Hills and came around the corner and hears this car crashed into a tree with a young kid in there, probably, you know, young adult. And in that certain area, I couldn't get radio silence, so I had to leave that person and drive to an area where I can get some radio and get some, some ambulances up there to, to help this person. You know, since 2001, since 9/11 happened, our eyes were woken up because the left hand couldn't talk to the right hand when it came to major emergencies. And from that time until now, there's been a lot of work to get a unified management, unified radios and everything else. We have great examples of our military, they work on a unified radio system. The Marines need to talk to the Navy and so on and so forth. And, you know, I've had that experience in combat where we had to talk to the Marines who are left and the Air Force who were to our right. And a couple of times, that didn't work and you freak out when the enemy is coming upon you. So these are really important things, the unified radio system, you know, the, it's for the betterment of, of everybody. And any delays or any barriers that slow down emergency services to our folks, we already have delays in someone finding somebody in need and then trying to call the police and find out where you're at. There's all those little delays. We don't need as, we don't need, and I say me, in my former life, or our public safety don't need anything that slows us down to get to, to help our people. So I support this. Councilmember Morrell talked about the governance and I hope the path forward is something we can all agree on and move forward with this. So, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Morrell. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you Chair. First, I just want to really thank our chiefs that took the time to come today, Chief Espinoza and Chief Sharp, really appreciate your input today, as well as your assistance and the assistance of a number of other chiefs that, that helped to put this resolution together. Yesterday in public safety, we also heard from Chief John Parkinson from East Pierce Fire and Rescue and Chief Zane Gibson of Central Pierce, formerly of Ordin Valley and Fire and Rescue, which has now merged with Central Pierce. So really appreciate your leadership on this issue. Of course, you all are the ones out in the field who, who are seeing firsthand how this is affecting not only the safety and efficiency of our first responders, but your ability to, to do your jobs and to keep the community safe. So we, we really appreciate it. Since joining the Board of South Sound 911 earlier this year, establishing a single radio system, a single unified system and agreed upon governance plan has been a top priority identified by the Police Chief Association and the Fire Chief Association. So working together, it's, it's just so important and your voice to the, to policymakers comes through loud and clear. So the chiefs today talked about how a single system will improve services, will lower costs, which is really important to your agencies, and improve coverage, just like Councilmember Herrera said and illustrated why that is so important. So this is, you know, one of those issues of time and money, and it's literally an issue of life and death. We talked yesterday in public safety, how in the event of a natural disaster, which, you know, we are prone to in the Pacific Northwest and increasingly so with wildfires and floods and earthquakes and volcanoes, things like that, or mass casualty events that are happening, you know, around the country and here in Washington. country and here in Washington as well, we need our first responders to be able to respond as quickly and as thoroughly to our communities' needs as well as keeping themselves safe. So I want to thank the council for, for coming together. I hope that you will support this resolution. I'll thank Councilmember Morell. He and I worked a lot yesterday to come to a place where we thought everyone could be supportive, because we want to move forward in a unified way as well. The last thing I'll just note is about the governance, that was something we talked a lot about yesterday, especially before public safety. And I want to thank Chief Sharp for bringing up the example of how Pierce Transit and Pierce County came together on that. These issues are challenging when different systems are owned by different entities. But what is the saying, we can do hard things. And, and at some point, we have to. We need to get around a table and figure this out, because it's not about us. It's not about, you know, what we own or how, how much we've owned it, how long we've owned it. It's about what's best for the community. And so sometimes, you know, those tough choices have to be made after a lot of thoughtful consideration, of course. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Denson, for bringing this forward. It has been an issue on the back of my mind for several years. I remember when it was passed to do this, and I'm thinking that's a lot of, a lot going on. And I'm not a tacky to understand, you know, how airwaves get through. But I know going to the different departments, and I'm hearing how, you know, the radios are in the bottom of the closet because they won't work. And there was a lot of money for this. And so I'm just, I just want to know I can push a button and I can talk. And so I'm grateful that we are getting to the point where that will work and everyone can communicate and we'll all be safer. And I'm amazed at how well you made things look to work out so easily when you had communications that were split. So thank you for your work. Thank you for the ordinance. And thank you, Councilmember Morell, for your background and knowledge in making sure that the details are better, because I just want to push a button. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. And I hear Councilmember Crowver about your desire to push buttons. That comes through loud and clear. All plans aside there, I really wanted to thank the members of the committee that came together and worked on this, brought to our attention the issues that we faced here as a county, and making sure that we, you know, work together to find that solution. We didn't just have someone say, this is what you all shall do, and then go out there and, and try to get everyone to accommodate, but rather listening across to everyone and getting something that was really going to work for everyone, because the needs of radio in an urban environment are different than in a rural environment, the farce ability to project and the amount of traffic it can carry, and so many different nuances that the average person wouldn't, wouldn't even think to ask about. And so I really want to thank everyone for your sound advice. And I'm glad that we can move together. I know, I remember discussing this when we were on Tacoma City Council on, on trying to get there. So a little over 20 years to get there, but the future is much brighter because of everyone's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Seeing no other hands, I want to thank Councilmember Denson for leading this work and for being our voice at the Board of the South Sound 911. And, and also, I know Councilmember Morell has put a lot of effort into this as well, again, with his firsthand experience, helping to lead a fire district. We really lean on experts like our fire chiefs and police chiefs, folks who use these communication devices on a daily, daily level. And they really know what they and their people need in order to be successful. And so thank you for being very clear advocates for the tools and resources your people in the field need to do their job. Please don't stop being really clear advocates. And as has been stated before, you know, it took about 10 or so years from 2011, when the voters of Pierce County passed the South Sound 911, one tenth of 1% to fund the radio system and South Sound 911. We got from six different owners down to two. So it's progress. But we still have, while we've made good progress, we're not all the way there yet. And two of our fire chiefs explained in detail and specificity some of the on-the-ground challenges that still exist, that will continue to cause major delay in response and put the lives of people serving us and the people they're trying to respond to. So, you know, I, as I understand it, it's not really a, radios cost money, the equipment, yes, it costs money. The voters have been generous here. We have the resources flowing to South Sound 911. This is about policy and governance and figuring out how to get to the finish line. And I just urge the decision makers that are at the table to put their egos aside and to figure out how we get to a plan that serves, serves our first responders and the people they're trying to serve really well. And I hope we do it really quickly. And this resolution voices where we think we need to take this conversation. And let's hope it doesn't take a long time to get there. Let's hope we work with some urgency. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2023-138-S?
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote has seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Thank you again for allowing us to go briefly out of order. I'm going to come back to item 2A under our consent agenda. We have proposal number R 2023-140 before us for consideration. Councilmember Crowver for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move proposal 2023-40.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2023-140. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-140, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, Tijinder Singh Dalawali, excuse me, to the Pierce County Tourism Promotion Area Hotel Commission.
Thank you. Tijinder, thank you for being with us. If I've mispronounced your name, please correct me. We'd invite you to introduce yourself and share briefly why you wish to serve. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So my name is Tijinder Dalawali. I represent, I own a business in Five, Washington. And I was, I got an email actually looking for volunteers, and I replied to that email. So here I am. I'm looking to sort of maybe learn something new and kind of help in any way I can. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for being with us. I'll see if there are any questions. Are there any questions by council members? We, like always with every appointment, have backup material that give us the biography and resume and application of each nominee. So council has had the benefit of that written material as well. But we appreciate you being here to introduce yourself.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any hands raised. So I'll open this up for a public hearing on Resolution 2023-140, making this appointment to the Pierce County Tourism Promotion Area Hotel Commission. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment? We'll start in chambers. I'm not seeing anybody rushing to the podium. Mr. Weinsberry, anybody in our Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-140, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Crowver?
Thank you, Chair. And Tijinder, I want to say thank you for stepping up to take this position. I, I understand you're a pretty dynamic guy, and so I'm looking forward to working with you on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowver. Any other final hands? Not seeing any. We add our gratitude for you lending your expertise and your valuable time to this, to this effort. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2023-140?
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote has seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the appointment resolution is adopted. That brings us to proposal R 2023-142. I'd like to call on Councilmember Hitchens for a motion.
Chair, I'd like to move R 2023-142.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2023-142. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-142, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, Lance Goodpastor, to the Pierce County Birth to 25 Advisory Board.
Thank you. Lance, thank you for being with us. You've been with us for some, for some time on this Zoom call. Thank you for making time. We, many of us know you, but we appreciate your willingness to serve in this capacity. As the Superintendent of Franklin Pierce Schools, we'd invite you to introduce yourself to those who might not know you and, and briefly share why you wish to serve on the Birth to 25 Advisory Board.
Yes. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for the, the opportunity and the consideration of, of my appointment. I certainly have a, a passion for serving our young people in, in the Franklin Pierce community, but also look forward to serving the children and young people across our county. I think it's, it's a great opportunity to have a superintendent representative on the group. And in addition to certainly the lens of the Franklin Pierce community that I'll bring, I'll also bring a lens of, of all Pierce County superintendents and being a liaison to that group. We meet regularly. We're in constant communication around topics of impact of our students. And so I'll serve with those dual, dual lenses and really look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you, Superintendent Goodpastor. Are there any questions for the superintendent before we open this up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. Let's open this up for a public hearing on Resolution 2023-142. We'll start in chambers. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this appointment confirmation? Not seeing any. Mr. Weinsberry, anybody on the Zoom room?
For any members of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-142, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Goodpastor for finding time to do this on behalf of our students and having his voice with this advisory group that comes up with really good ideas around kids and then goes, how do we do this in our schools? And they didn't have a school person there that knew a whole school system. So my suggested fix was to have a superintendent who understands the complexities of an entire school district and can be there to help advise these really motivated, excited, hardworking individuals that are also volunteering their time to think about how we can do better by our kids and our community. So just want to thank you and, and probably your family a little bit for giving you just one more meeting to attend. So, thank you.
Just one more thing. Thank you. Councilmember Crowver?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to confirm, I agree with Councilmember Hitchens. I just am aware of your enthusiasm, your knowledge and dedication from the meetings I've been to that you've been. So thank you for taking this on and being part of it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? I'll close by appreciating you, Superintendent, and as Councilmember Hitchens said, to your staff team and your, and your family who are allowing you to give just a little bit more of your time and expertise to this countywide effort. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2023-142?
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote has seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution confirming Superintendent Goodpastor is adopted. Back to our regular agenda. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to accommodate those guests. We are at our first ordinance. We're at Section 8, ordinances, proposal number 2023-33. Councilmember Herrera for a motion.
Chair, I move proposal number 2023-33 for approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2023-33. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number 2023-33, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council finding proposed non-inclusive franchise agreement to Mox Networks LLC for a wireline system.
Last line, please.
The last line is county executive to enter into the franchise agreement.
Thank you. Do I have Mr. Cox, I do have Mr. Cox on, on this, in the Zoom room. Mr. Cox to brief the council this evening.
Yes, Chair Mallow, members of council, Jeff Cox, council staff. The proposed ordinance grants a franchise to Mox Networks LLC for the purpose of operating a wireline telecommunications system in the unincorporated portions of Pierce County. The proposal sets forth terms and conditions accompanying the grant of the franchise and regulates the construction, operation, maintenance, and use of the system, and establishes remedies for violations of the franchise. The executive is authorized to enter into the agreement. Mox Networks describes itself as a subsidiary of networks, a company composed of various private and public entities focusing on health and life sciences, energy, renewables, and connectivity and communications. According to the map provided by the company and included in the legislative package, Mox Networks will be removing 60-count fiber from existing duct and replacing it with between 288 and 432-count fiber along an existing underground route running north and east from the Squali River at North Elm to 176th Street East and 45th Avenue East near Spanaway. A map is included with the document showing the placement of the infrastructure within the context of the county as a whole. Denise Clayton, General Counsel with Mox Networks, has, is, I believe, on the line with us as we, as I speak, to answer questions you might have about her company. The Planning and Public Works Department recommended approval of this motion. They received a due pass recommendation at the September 12 Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee. And I'd also like to point out that we have John Baker, right-of-way agent with the Planning and Public Works Department, with us too, to answer any questions you might have. And I'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, do you have anything to add on behalf of the department?
No. This is a fairly standard wireline franchise, and we are looking forward to getting it complete and working with Mox more in the future.
Thank you for being with us and making yourself available for questions. Are there any questions by council members before we open this up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. This is a public hearing on ordinance 2023-33. Any member of the public wish to provide comment on this franchise agreement? Please come to the podium and state your name. Anyone in chambers? Not seeing any. Mr. Weinsberry, anybody in our Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-33, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Not seeing any. This was reviewed in our Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee, as was stated, and fully studied and reviewed and provided a due pass recommendation to the full council. And so with that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll on 2023-33.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote has seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. That does bring us to proposal 2023-36. I'd like to call on Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move proposal number 2023-36.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2023-36. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number 2023-36, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council adopting a new chapter 2.40 of the Pierce County Code, Commission on Equity.
Thank you. Mr. Bridges to brief the council.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, this ordinance comes to you by way of the Health and Human Services Committee with the due pass recommendation. It was heard on September 19. In addition, there was discussion of the proposal during today's study session. The proposal creates a commission on equity. The format follows the usual commission format. There are provisions establishing the commission, the purpose of the commission, there are definitions, membership of the commission, namely 11 members, seven appointed by the council, four appointed by the executive. Of those four, there are two members that represent the age groups of 15 to 17 and 18 to 21. The other two members would be a representative appointed by The other two members would be a representative appointed by a tribe and a representative who is a member of a tribe. There are provisions for the removal of office, which are the same with other commissions, malfeasance or unattendance at a series of meetings. There are provisions establishing the rules of procedure. The procedures are essentially the same as for the council, Robert's rules, although considering the informality that typically occurs in boards and commissions. There is provision for compensation, which is different from the other boards and commissions. The proposed ordinance provides for a stipend of $200 for low-income members. Low income is defined as 400% of the federal poverty level. That is the same definition that is used in state law, which created the option of agencies to write up to $200 per meeting for their boards and commissions. There is a meeting schedule that's set out, the commissions to meet up to 24 times a year, and staff support will be provided by the executive. The fiscal note provides for two FDEs provided by the executive. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Are there questions for Mr. Bridges before we consider three amendments that are before us? Are there any questions for Mr. Bridges before we consider amendments? I'm not seeing any. We were, as was indicated, we were able to consider this in the Health and Human Services Committee, spoke about it several times at study sessions since it got out of committee. And I know that there's been lots of dialogue about it. So, thank you, Mr. Bridges. The order that we're going to go in so that the public can understand our process, we're going to consider three amendments that are up for consideration. The council will debate those amendments, and then we will open it up for a public hearing. We'll do the public hearing, and then we'll come back to the council for continued dialogue and consideration. So there are three amendments before us. The first is council amendment number one. Councilmember Crowver for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move amendment number one for 2023-36.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number one. Mr. Bridges to introduce the amendment.
Mr. Chair, this amendment sets a sunset for the commission. The commission would sunset on December 31, 2028.
Thank you. Are there remarks on this amendment? Councilmember Crowver.
Thank you, Chair. I would urge adoption of the amendment. This is a rather dynamic commission that is being created. And judging or discerning from the past, we had a sunset on the egg commission, we had a sunset on the transportation committee, and they deemed valuable at the end, and they were put into full context or codified. And so I'm asking that, you know, there is a five-year, there will be different members here at that time. Yeah. And it would give them an opportunity to evaluate the progress of this commission and discern if to give it a longer term. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Some might look at my background today and think I like sunsets, but if you look closely, that's actually a sunrise. That is the sun rising over Mount Rainier as from East Tacoma. And, you know, we have the ability as a council that if we don't like the direction a committee is going or a commission, to open that up and bring it back at any time. And so at this point, I want them to have the certainty to do their work and not under threat of a deadline. I would respectfully understand where the council members are going, but would oppose that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver, your lights up again.
Thank you, Chair. Just as a remark to that, because I thought of that, because we can. However, there are times when there are agreements made that are entanglements with other entities that make it very difficult to undo things that may be done or agreed with. I don't know what they might be, but when I think of Puget Sound Regional Council and the influence that that organization has, and there was research done on perhaps removing ourselves from that organization, it was virtually impossible. So this just makes it a lot cleaner. I would suggest that they would probably try harder to make sure things are what the public wants. Because of the controversy that we are seeing from the many emails that are coming through, I think it would be beneficial for us to accommodate that by having a sunset clause. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll join Vice Chair Campbell in respectfully asking for a no vote. This commission that I'm really pleased that we're going to be establishing today has a lot of work to do in front of it and has been said should be free to do its work. And we know that this work that we're charging them with is going to take a lot of effort, a lot of folks involved with a lot of different voices, and there should not be an artificial timeframe. And as has been indicated, this or any board or commission can be reconstituted, changed, taken away at a future council. But I don't see this work needing to end anytime soon or with an artificial deadline. And I think we need to charge them with the work ahead. So I'll ask for a no vote. The amendment is on adoption of amendment number one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
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 The amendment is not adopted. That brings us to amendment number two. Councilmember Crowver for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move amendment number two for proposal 2023-36.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number two. Mr. Bridges.
Mr. Chair, this amendment would strike the compensation subsection.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver, just speak to your amendment.
Thank you, Chair. We have many boards and commissions that serve on a voluntary basis, and while this one is special in my determination, I don't feel that it is something that we should be compensating at this time. This can lead to a great deal of financial burden to our constituents in the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other remarks? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. During performance audit, we did a kind of deep dive into our boards and commissions. And with this coming up, I was reflecting on that. So I just want to call out one of the reasons I think this is such a valuable piece of this ordinance to be left in is currently in our boards and commissions, 66% of the members of our boards and commissions make more than $100,000. And it's 11% of our population, according to this. So when you think about that, there's some disparities there, that we have a majority of our population is not living with $100,000 in their paycheck over the course of a year, and their voice is not represented. And so if we want to change this, this is one way to do that. I think this is a great group to start this, and maybe this is one of the things we have them look at, is this a way to actually diversify our boards and commissions by offering this? And if, in fact, they find it doesn't matter, it doesn't work, I would assume and hope that they would come back and say, nope, this didn't work. This is why you have us here talking about equity, because that's one of the things that we are going to task them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver.
Thank you, Chair. I still will speak in favor of a yes on the amendment. There are a lot of different values that people have, and money isn't always the same thing. There are abilities to zoom onto the meetings. There are people who are nearby and can walk. I believe this is more meaningful from those who are volunteering because they really want to be there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll close by also asking for a no vote. Like Councilmember Hitchens indicated, I'm really pleased that we're placing a modest per diem for this board or commission. We know that one factor that really keeps a really diverse group of individuals with so many different lived experiences participating and giving really valuable advice to the county is just simply their ability to do it because of childcare demands or other family or household demands. This isn't going to solve all of the problems, but I think it's a really important step in the right direction to be able to provide a per diem to recognize their experience and to provide at least some nominal resources to be able to deal with childcare or elder care or food or whatever it is, the many things in life that get in the way of someone giving of their time for this kind of work. So I'm really pleased that we're doing this for Equity Commission. It's really walking the talk in terms of clearing through some systemic barriers to why some people aren't able to participate. And I'm pleased that we're doing that in this bill. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you. I just had a question, and this goes to Mr. Bridges. Do members have the ability to use technology and zoom in on these meetings?
So the ordinance is silent on that, but the practice of the other boards and commissions as well as this council is yes.
So does the 200 per day, it does say they attend a commissioner meeting, so they have to be there in person?
No, that is not what the ordinance says. So attendance is not defined. Attendance could be attendance by Zoom or attendance in person.
So they could be watching their children while they're doing a commission meeting? I'm just, that's an arbitrary question, but I'm just saying if they could zoom in, they could multitask. But I just wanted to make sure we understood that, that the $200 wasn't for them to personally attend a meeting, it's just a meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Seeing other hands, excuse me, Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. And Councilmember Morell, I will, I appreciate what you're saying. As someone zooming in, it isn't always easy to... Sorry, my computer just...
... building mass notification from security operations section. S to C, alarm at Court's office room, one time is deemed false by court security.
There, sorry, Councilmember Campbell, there is an alarm coming forward on our devices.
I got it on mine, too.
We heard it. And I think others here, it's other staff in chambers. It is deemed a false alarm by court security, so all is clear. Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Chair Campbell, please proceed.
I was trying to point out how difficult Zoom sometimes can be. And I think this is a good point, that zooming in, while convenient, allows access to people who, I mean, we just gave a proclamation at the beginning for people who have trouble accessing transportation to various parts. And so Zoom is not always just an ability to provide childcare, but it's for those who can't travel now can possibly apply. And secondarily, the work of the commission, when you serve on any board or commission, at least the ones I've served on, and I know this is true of many of you, the work isn't only done from gavel to gavel. We're doing lots of, you know, pre-reading, understanding. Yes, most of the work is done gavel to gavel, but people put in hours beyond just the time that they're meeting in person. They're out meeting with people, they're reviewing issues, they're reviewing policies, you know, they're looking at budgets, whatever their commission may be. But the workload is far more than just that moment that they're together. So I, you know, we do appreciate the time of people willing to put forward, and we want to make sure that that's recognized. We do it already on some other boards and commissions, and I think it's a good practice to be in. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver.
Thank you, Chair. I don't begrudge the desire to want to give a compensation for the meetings. It does take an effort to get there, and it does take time, and you have some research. It, to me, violates the spirit of giving and the spirit of wanting to give back. And sometimes it is almost to where you're trying to do something to help, and people, oh, no, I got to pay you. You don't want to be paid. And that's where I'm coming from on this. I think people, you know, they want to serve, and compensation isn't always the right gesture. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll just remind the body that no one's forced to take the per diem. The per diem is offered for individuals who are of low-income means, which means by this definition, an individual whose income is not more than 400% of the federal poverty level adjusted for family size. So no one needs to take it, but if this helps them participate more fully, that is what this is intended to do. The vote is on the amendment to remove the compensation section of the Equity Commission bill. All those in favor of adopting council amendment number two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nay. The amendment is not adopted. That brings us to council amendment number three. Councilmember Crowver for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move 2023-36, amendment three.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number three. Mr. Bridges.
Mr. Chair, this amendment will require you to refer to two source documents that have been passed out. Under this amendment, the commission would need to abide by Article One, Section 11 of the Washington State Constitution and Chapter 4260 RCW, and those provisions would apply to all commission business. Article One, Section 11 of the state constitution is the section regarding religious freedom. Absolute freedom of conscience in all matters of religious sentiment, belief, and worship shall be guaranteed to every individual, and no one shall be molested or disturbed in person or property in account of religion. But the liberty of conscience hereby secured should not be construed as to excuse acts of licentiousness or justify practices inconsistent with keeping safety. And then it goes on about the use of public money. RCW, Chapter 4260, regards prohibitions of state employees and state agencies regarding information related to religion. So for example, a state or local government agency or public employee shall not disclose to the federal government authorities personally identifiable information regarding the religious beliefs and practices of any individual, except where the employee is a witness of a crime. Public funds may not be used to compile lists or registries or databases of personally identifiable information about an individual's religious beliefs. And furthermore, a state agency or public employee may disclose, make personally identifiable information from the agency databases available. So I got that backwards. This is also prohibition. Any information collected regarding religious beliefs may not be disseminated to private vendors, for example, that are hired by the agency. The other provision regards law enforcement, so would not be directly applicable here.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowver, just speak to your amendment.
Thank you, Chair. This stems out of personal experience in that I did attend the county's class on race, and I did attend a countywide class on DEI, and I felt personally challenged and that my conscience was challenged. And this just is a measure, as a self-protection, and I might add that I also have had county employees mention to me their discomfort with things. And so it's just a measure that, to recognize those rights that we have in this ordinance. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm a little frustrated that we have multiple opportunities to bring amendments forward before the body, to understand them, to debate them, have conversation together. We've had study session yesterday, we had study session today, there's set aside time to have dialogue about amendments for the meeting. Was this not, were you asked to prepare this a long time ago, and we just didn't bring it? Or why could we not meet the deadline to have conversation about this or the other amendments? Councilmember Crowver.
Thank you, Chair. You yourself mentioned earlier about being able to do amendments. This is simply codifying what is already law and state law into our county code, and it didn't seem like it would be something that controversial because it's there. And also, I didn't anticipate there being so much interest in this piece of legislation until today. of legislation until today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I would ask for a no vote. We have to abide by the state constitution in all things that we do, and this is no different. The vote is on adoption of Council Amendment Number Three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nay, the amendment is not adopted. Are there any final remarks? Are there any further questions or comments about Proposal 2023 dash 36 before we open this up for a public hearing? Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you, everyone. The, thank you, Chair. Mr. Bridges, and you may have touched on this before, and I just want to be clear, we're not creating a new commission here. This is not some new work. This is built upon work that local leaders of a commission that local leaders have already served on. And is that, is that correct? Can you give us maybe a brief history?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Campbell. So the ordinance provides for the legislative history that leads up to the creation of this commission. It's over, it was over a two and a half year process. There were predecessor organizations, resolutions that preceded this that have set out the council's desire to engage in this sort of equity work. The, the result, this, this commission created in a permanent fashion by ordinance is a recommendation of the Equity Review Committee that was appointed by this council in 2022 and issued its opinion and its recommendation in October of that year.
And this is, by my count, this would be the third commission that we've created, at least within the last two years, the Refugee, Commission on Refugee and Immigrant Affairs and the Agricultural Advisory Commission. Then this would be the third. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Okay. And so what I see it in is a pattern of broadening who it is that we seek to get advice from, be it the rural and agricultural communities, refugees and immigrants, members of our Equity Commission. So I think we've been doing some good work at bringing forward a broad spot. And we have a couple dozen commissions. Correct me if I'm wrong, we've actually, as a council, allowed some of them to actually go unstaffed or unfunded, such as firearms commission. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I want to thank you for your work on this and make sure that we thank the members of the commission who've been doing the hard work up until now. Many local leaders who we know, who can speak for themselves about the good work of this commission. But that's all that I have at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions, Vice Chair Campbell. If there's no other hands at this time by council members, we're going to open this up for a public hearing on Proposal 2023 36, adopting a new code, creating the commission on equity. We'll start with those who have signed up in chambers. There's a few of you that, that did not indicate a willingness or interest in testifying. So I'll just call your name, and if you are, we very much welcome you to the podium. And you'll have three minutes to make your remarks. And we ask that you address your comments to the chair. There will be a timer on the screen to your right, if you are standing at the podium. And then we're going to get to those who are participating in the Zoom room. So again, starting in chambers, I have Patricia Hope. You did not indicate an interest in testifying. Patricia, do you wish to testify? Would you like to testify?
No.
Well, thank you for being with us. I, is it Terry Ross? Can't read the handwriting. Terry, do you wish to testify?
Not now.
Thank you very much for being with us. Is it Nancy Ching?
Uh, not now.
Thank you. Susan Lincoln?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Randall, excuse me, I can't read your last name. Is it Conway? Wish to testify?
No, thank you.
Thank you for being with us. David Bryant, you have three minutes to make your remarks. I encourage you to introduce yourself. Thank you.
All right. I'm David Bryant, and I'm in County Council District One, Dave Morell's district. There are grand goals and objectives in, in this, and I oppose this not because it's important, because it is too important to pass off those responsibilities to a non-elected commission. I think it is one of the primary responsibilities, if not the primary responsibility, for the council members that we elect to ensure that we have equal opportunity for all in our county. So I oppose this because I think it diminishes the responsibility and authority of the council members that we elect. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Thank you. Again, going by the sign-in sheets. Valerie, are you here for this item, Valerie? Valerie, are you here for this item?
Yes, I am.
You're welcome to come in, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks.
Thank you. Excuse me for a minute while I compose myself. I'm a little bit angered.
Do you mind introducing yourself?
Yes, yes, I'm going to do that. My name is Valerie Hartwell. I'm pastor of Jesus Unlimited Christian Church in Spanaway, Washington. I'm also a resident of Puyallup, District Two, with Mr. Herrera. And I just came, became informed of this ordinance that you all are trying to vote on today. I just got aware of it just over a couple of days ago. And I find it appalling, and I think it is highly unfair and unforgivable that you all, Mr. Morell, you are mellow, you said that you all have had discussions, you know, in closed doors or whatever that you've had, to have debate on this before you're throwing this out for a vote. Now, that's fine, but, you know, to, to represent a ordinance such as this without giving all of your constituents, not just a select few, that by the way, we pay your salary, to represent all your constituents, not just a select few, and to do this without giving the, the Pierce County residents, all of them, all of your constituents enough time to be able to not just come and speak on this issue, but have enough time to even be made aware of this. I think it's appalling and unforgivable, and it, and it's bordering on tyranny, Mr. Mello. This committee that has been proposed, I think it's also very unfair that you all want to give monies to these, to this group. That's, as Mr., I forgot his name, Mr. Bryant said, they would be getting a, a per diem for money. What about us as taxpayers to have the right to speak on this before you vote on this today? So one of the issue, or one of the things that this committee would do, it would, they would be a conduit to provide two-way communications between the community and you that are the decision-makers. What about us? What about every single person in Pierce County that you should give us time to be able to even be made aware of this ordinance, this ultra-liberal radical ordinance, this committee, without giving us time to respond to it? So I'm going to ask you, Mr. Mello, as a chairman of this, of this ordinance, that you table this, till you give people enough time to be made aware of it so that we can come and respond to it. I think it's highly unfair to take taxpayer dollars without giving us a chance to speak on it. And then lastly, forgive me if I'm a little bit, I have 15 seconds left. Lastly, I would ask you, in the future, for all of Pierce County residents, that you as a council members make some sort of policies in place so that this doesn't happen again, so that there's not renegades making ordinances like this. Make policies so that we have enough ample time, not just a week
Thank you.
or a few days, to respond to, to ordinances like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Next, I have Alton McDonald.
Good evening, Council, Chair, members. I'm in full support of Ordinance 2023 dash 36. My name is Alton McDonald. I am a citizen of this United States of America, a resident of Pierce County, and also a taxpayer and a veteran of this great nation. We have lived in a country that speaks about human rights, and we have portrayed to be a country that believe in equity and justice for all, liberty and justice for all. And it's a shame that a council has to put together a document such as this to deal with equity in this country, these United States of America. And the reason why I say this is because we expose this freedom and democracy and justice for all. And I'm happy to know that this council, today, the 26th day of September 2023, will take a vote in this particular ordinance. I am happy to know that when we speak about equity and justice, that means all of us and only some of us. It means that each of us, black, white, pink or blue, gay or straight, Christian or on church, should have a right to live in a country where you are respected, treated with dignity, and also with equity. And it's incumbent upon the council to take this action, to make sure that every citizen that live in this county is treated with equity. And to have this commission in place is a good thing, to assist the council in doing this work. I'm a voter, and I vote for my elected representative. I've always said, no taxation without representation. If I have no representation, then don't tax me. Make my address free from all taxes, my addresses, so to speak. If I pay taxes, I must have representation. And this is a part of representation. Ordinance Number 2023 dash 36, where every citizen in this county will have an opportunity to be heard and to be listened to by this commission assisting the council government in doing this job. And thank you, council members. This make this great, this make America a better place for all of us and only, not only for some of us. This is a great nation. And because this is a great nation, I stand here as a veteran. And to my brothers and sisters who are serving overseas in other parts of the world right now, as we loom, my time is up, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I hope that the council will vote in favor of Resolution 2023 dash 36. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Councilmember, I have signed in on this ordinance. Is there anyone else wishing to provide a comment? Will, will remain? My microphone wasn't on. I apologize. So we have signed in on this ordinance in chambers. We'll soon move to the Zoom room. If there's others, please queue up, please come forward and queue up at the podium. We ask you to, please come forward, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to make your remarks.
My name is Steve McCoy, council members. I'm a little troubled with this. It's one recent years, we've come to this idea of equity. And that's somewhat new to me because what I look in the Constitution, there's equality, and they don't equal. Equity, what, what I, from my observation, as people have tried to impose equity, what they've, what they've really done is imposed intolerance, bigotry, and racism. Because you can't sort people by the color of their skin or how much money they make without being intolerant and without being, without subjugating them to things where you're, you're taking away the merits of people. You're taking away the equality provides the opportunity for us to achieve and to gain merit. And when you, when you apply equity, you're destroying that. So my curiosity is, what's causing us to look at and think we have a need to create a commission on equity? Because I don't see any, any benefits to equity. And I don't see any, any good documentation or studies that says we're going to do anything better than provide things that are happening like in Portland or downtown Seattle, where what you have, where equity's been imposed, is more homelessness, more poverty. What we need is equality. That's the fundamental of our state constitution and our federal constitution, is that we are all equal, created equal with equal opportunity, not equal results. So I strongly, strongly oppose this. I think it ought to be voted down, and I think that we ought to be supporting equality and not trying to build up government to take away the rights of our people.
Thank you for being with us. Please come forward and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Kama Bigby. I'm in District Seven. And I didn't intend on saying anything, but I, I decided that I really should. Nationwide, similar initiatives have been, have devolved into diversive and harmful policies for the propagation of controversial issues that have not yet been adopted. Particular concern is the threat to duly-elected representatives in government and for the Commission on Equity to become a politically charged gatekeeper. This unelected body could exert undue influence over Pierce County's decisions, sidelining the voices of the people and undermining the democratic process completely. And I think it's also deceitful and cowardice to mumble your way through your issues so that we can't hear. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. We'll do our best to speak up and speak louder. Thank you for letting us know. Are there any other members of the public wishing to provide comment? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Nancy Chang. And for the past 20 months, I have had the honor of serving as a digital equity collaborative lead for Washington State. In the last three months, I've been doing a lot of great work with amazing people in Pierce County around digital equity. And so it's interesting for me to hear what other people think of equity because equity for broadband in this context is ensuring that those that have been historically underserved or under-invested in have the opportunity to be connected to broadband. So in terms of, you know, we're talking about equity in a very, you know, philosophical way. I'm giving you a very concrete way of understanding what equity means for me personally. In the last few months, I've been super proud of working with Pierce County social service providers who really understand that equity is important when it comes to broadband issues. And usually, for me, who's most impacted are seniors. Who's most impacted are young people that don't have a place to share their concerns and understand how to get resources. And so it is important to have commissions that are open to helping to support the work that you all do, because you can't read through pages and pages and pages of research around equity around different topics. Equity is a very ubiquitous word, and I just want to make sure people understand that when we talk about equity, it means a lot of different things. And I hear and, and sense the tension and concerns around some different folks in the space. Welcome for them to come speak to me later around what equity means for me and why I see it as a cornerstone of ensuring that all Americans are uplifted from poverty. You need to understand who's not being invested in. And when you have an equity commission, it basically says, who have we been historically under-investing in for decades and maybe even centuries? And who just needs a little bit of support? It's, it's saying that, you know, not everybody needs the whole pie. Some people just need a little bit. And, and if we're talking about equality, yeah, I would love making $100,000 a year, but I work in social services, and that's not my, my current career path. But yeah, I'd love that equal salary, but nobody's going to give that to me. And I'm okay with that. But coming back to, to the commission, it's important for people that haven't had opportunities to be in privileged spaces like this to show up, to share what impedes them from having prosperity and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in chambers wishing to provide comments? We welcome you to come to the podium and state your name for the record. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for having me. I didn't know I was going to speak today. So my name is Dr. Terrell Ross, and I just want to say that I grew up in Pierce County. I've lived here most of my life, and I'm in my 60s. And I'm really glad to be part of And I'm really glad to be part of, to see my county is interested in doing something in the name of equity. I have been the chief diversity officer for a PAC 12 institution, and I think that what's really interesting is this county has exploded with ethnic diversity. Now, there's all types of diversity, but I know that it's exploded with that since I got here and since I lived on Fort Lewis. And so as you go forward, I think that what's important in all of this work, because I've seen it work and I've seen it fail, and the thing that's important is to open the funnel at the front end, so you get a wide range of people from all backgrounds. Any group that I've been in, that I've been in charge of, I think that's important, people from all backgrounds who have an equal voice. However, I, I think it's, I, I think we should not be afraid of equity, because not everyone has the right, as Nancy said so well, not everybody can be here, not everybody can make it. When I teach in my classes, I always have an empty chair, and the empty chair represents two people. It represents people who can't be in this room for whatever reason, and it also represents people who are in the room who don't feel safe. And so I, I, I've been the victim of campaigns against the work and what we do, but you know what? When your heart's in the right place and the people that you have on this commission are in the right place, I'm very confident that it will illuminate and it will help you to be a more diverse and thriving county. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment? We welcome you to come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Terry McCoy, and I join others that I had no idea I was going to speak, but as I've listened to people, a number one concern, actually, I've got a few, but that if the word equity has no definition and is so broad, how does a group work together on a common goal? And so I would hope that there's more time spent in discussing this ordinance and offering more information to the public, and maybe, maybe it's already been offered, and I'm guilty of not knowing that, and so that would be on me. And so I just think that it behooves us to do more work, because I believe in diversity. I believe that all, all of us, doesn't matter religion, race, gender, all of that, have the freedom of speech and a bunch of other freedoms, the Declaration and the Constitution of our state and federal. But I just think we need to do some more work, because I'm, I'm confused, and I, I'm thankful for, for the comments, because it gives me more understanding whether I agree, disagree, or I need more information. So thank you.
Thank you for coming with a.
I would encourage you to not adopt it, to, to vote no until we do more work. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks for coming with a curious mind. Anyone else in chambers on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hey, guys, I'm Eric Musica, and I'd follow up with that. I didn't know what the equity council really entails or what you guys handle. I don't know how much poll you guys have, but, you know, you got a big, good size. A shout out to the woman that got batted originally is like how she didn't know about it, and so I think that's kind of the red flag to take more time into this thing, and then just value everybody's decision. And then like if you do adopt it and you have like one council people that you put up for it, have another council just for the general public, so like more people can vote into the decision or whatnot. But I didn't know, I'll do more research into this, and it's interesting to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, council members and Chair Mallow. Thank you very much for building a larger table for our community. As a member of a congregation here in the Tacoma area, I know that our congregation often says, who else can we bring to the table to hear maybe what we're missing? So you all have done that. You've done that for the last two years, and you're expanding this opportunity for more of us to come to the table and inform each and every one of you as to what is needed within our communities. I grew up in a very poor home. My dad is a minister. We knew that maybe we didn't have the best of all things, but I can tell you that as I grew up, I knew I wanted to be involved in community service, but I also knew that I did not have the economic wherewithal to do that. I stand before you, sitting in many boards and commissions in this community. I've sat on church boards, I've sat on community boards, I've sat on many, many meetings. And I can tell you that the one piece of this that was talked about that actually gave me hope was that you are willing to give people who are economically disparaged an opportunity to show up at these meetings. The question was, can people zoom in? You bet. How do you buy a computer? The question was, can you zoom in? You bet. How do you pay for your internet services? We have opportunities, but not everybody has equitable access to those opportunities. I also want to encourage you that as we think about the makeup of these boards, we, as an organizational community, say that those seats that are at this table are open, as we've all said, to everyone, everyone who is open, willing, and Councilmember Krueger, as you pointed out, want to serve. I come from a long, long line of service. This is an opportunity for us to open up service to those who may not have the opportunity to know how to serve. So thank you for doing this. I 100% approve of this message and approve of this process. I think that as we sit here, even in a group of folks who maybe have differing opinions and opportunities, I am encouraged that the conversation has started, and I encourage all of you who sit here to come to these meetings and actually come and be a part of the process. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment? I don't see anybody else in chambers at this time, so we're going to move to our Zoom room. Mr. Winesbury, I'll ask you to call on individuals with their hands up in our Zoom room.
For any members of the public, excuse me, if forty members of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-36, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And we have seven hands up right now, so the first hand I'm seeing is last name Hamilton, first name Eddie. Please state your name for the record.
With heartfelt prayer and study, the wastefulness of establishing an equity commission has been revealed as nothing more than virtue signaling. I rise in opposition. True earnestness is not found in the inclination to serve people, but the principles upon which this nation was founded. Every project conceived must be disciplined to obey religion and morality. These principles remain foremost for society's survival. We are a nation and community of laws and not men. Personal agendas have no place in the process, but only honest debate, of which the motivation is purely that which best accomplishes those principles and sustains personal liberties. We must come to the realization and be committed to a virtuous responsibility of being transformed by the renewing of our mind. Many have strayed, but for the sake of hope, there remains a remnant, and we implore you, as government leaders, offer a county day of prayer proclamation, asking Pierce County's clergy to call people to pray with focus and faithful study in doctrinal, religious, and moral practices. If a commission is decided upon, do not weigh it down with complicated regulations and guidance, but allow them to develop close working relationships to hear public concern and inform citizens on basic civic functions which influence government on their behalf. Thank you, and I yield back the remainder of my time.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. Hamilton.
All right, the next hand we have is Ashley Kay. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Ashley Curdy. I reside in Council District Number One in Ordin, and I am with some of the others in the room as far as this is something that just came up on my radar. Looking back over the records, I see that this was something that was submitted in July, and if you look over your public comments as well, most of those are over the last couple of days. And I think it's because it's just come to the forefront of most of our minds that this is something that our county is looking at implementing. And so I know I had to do some fast research on this, which entailed spending a good deal of yesterday, listening to last week's meeting about this, as well as I dove into, and I sat in and listened on some of the equity meeting for the Lacy Committee of Equity there, just trying to get an idea of what does a committee of equity do? You know, what are the things that they're looking at? What are the things that they're implementing? And I agree with the others that this seems, you know, just like it maybe needs some more time to be in front of the public. And I, I really agree, and I really commend County Commissioner, oh, she, she's over, let me see the name of it, the one that asked the questions that put together the amendments for today. I don't think that should have been discouraged in the way that that was, because if her constituents were just now becoming aware of it and bringing these things to her mind, that is her duty as their representative to bring that before you today. So I really commend her for that, that she is listening to her constituents, and I hope that all the commission will listen to their constituents as well. The things that came to my mind as I'm researching this, as I'm looking into it, is I had some questions as far as each council member has an ability to fill their appointment for their, for their area. And I would love to hear from each council member on what are your plans? How do you plan on finding that person to sit on the committee to represent your, your area? You know, do you already actually have someone in mind, or what is your process? Another question I had was, it was brought up in the meeting last week, of do we have any data as far as seeing, you know, have these committees in other parts of Washington, other parts of the country, have, have they actually impacted decision-making? And there was no data on that. I think Mr. Bridges mentioned, you know, looking at King County, he doesn't have any data on that. So is that something we can put into action with our equity committee? You know, as here in Pierce County, can we collect that data? Can we somehow take a vote on, hey, did the, you know, equity committee change your mind on this issue? Did it make you vote a different way? Can we collect that data? I think the sunset amendment was a great idea, you know, to be able to see, you know, are, I'm assuming the purpose of this is change. We, we want change, we want equity, you know, we want people to be equally represented. And so if this committee does that process over the next five years, is it necessary to continue it on? We would hope that there would be change in that time. And so those are just some of the things that have come to my mind. Like I said, it's really fast trying to research this in such a fast way, but I, I would love it if there was more time, if we could table this.
All right, next hand, we have, excuse me, last name, Inning Nobles. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Tawana Nobles. I am very grateful to be able to testify this evening. I definitely want to thank the Equity Review Committee for its work over the years to come to the point of making the recommendation for a commission on equity. I am excited that the county that I live in is focused on creating this partnership between community and decision-makers to make sure that our policies are equitable and the needs of our community members are met. And as it says, actually, in the ordinance, regardless of race or ethnicity or gender or sexual orientation or income or neighborhood or any other factor, that we will have a commission that is helping to be on the ground and have ears on the ground with community members and then report back so that our decision-makers can have a good idea of what's needed in a community. I also want to share a little scenario, and I want to credit Risha Grant in her, in her blog post for this scenario. But in a classroom, if all students were there to do one thing, learn, and we all want our children to have access to education, but we know that each child comes with a different set of unique challenges. Perhaps a child is born with reduced hearing, and the teacher in that class is aware that this child has this unique challenge, but decides that it's unfair to the rest of the students to sit the hearing challenged student in front of the class because he or she wants to treat each child equally. The teacher is trying to exercise equality in the classroom and doing so with the best intentions, but the child with the hearing challenges will have much more to overcome than the other students. This example seems to have a simple resolution, and the simple resolution is equity. The teacher should move the child to the front of the classroom so she or he or they can hear the lesson or receive the accommodation that they need so they can be successful. Imagine that the teacher decides to implement equity as a concept, but the other students or other parents become angry because they feel like it's not fair that this child get to sit in front of the classroom, and their kids are further away from the instruction. They want their child to be closer so they can have the opportunity to hear the lesson and be more engaged. But many of you would think that the parents are quite ridiculous. You would expect them to have understanding and compassion that someone who has a challenged hearing is at a disadvantage and therefore should be given this unique opportunity for support. And so I say that we apply the same type of compassionate understanding for a person in our community who is not a native English speaker or may be a single mom or may need other types of accommodations. But the only way to understand how we can create equitable policies and make equitable decisions and meet the needs of our diverse community is to have this increased conversation and this two-way conversation. And I think this Commission on Equity will get us closer to meeting the true needs of our diverse community in Pierce County. And so I ask that you vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles.
All right, next name, last name, S.A.X.E.N.A.
Sexena, Priya Sexena.
Thank you. Greetings, Chair Mallow and everybody in the room. Thank you for your work today. My name is Priya Sexena. I'm a proud resident of District Four and also run a small business here. I am standing in favor of this ordinance today and encourage you all to vote in favor as well. Equity, taking from the definition in the ordinance, is a response to historic and systemic actions by government that lead to unequal outcomes, unequal outcomes that our residents still face today. Simply put, when we look out for those who have been left behind, we all benefit, we all look out for each other. A rising tide lifts all boats. This work doesn't divide us, quite the opposite, it unites us and it makes us stronger. And this work has been going on for years in our county. This is not fast-paced, unthoughtful, unforgiving work. This has been thoughtful and intentional. And the costs associated with this commission are simply the costs of good governance. This work requires staff so that the work can be done in good faith. It requires being able to pay those of us who have been marginalized and therefore are living in poverty and want to serve. Uplifting community members is a bipartisan issue. Solving for past wrongs is a bipartisan issue, and good governance is a bipartisan issue. I am so, so proud to be a Pierce County resident, and I am grateful that county is looking out for people like me. And looking out for me does not mean that other people go uncared for. We all still be, can be cared for in a county that focuses on equity. To that end, I am strongly in favor of this ordinance and urge you all to vote in its favor. Thank you, and I yield back my time.
Thank you, Priya.
All right, next, last name, Leslie. Please state your name for the record.
My name is John Wesley.
Welcome, John, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Very good. My name is John Wesley. I'm a lifelong resident of Pierce County. I would like to testify in opposition to this ordinance. The term equity is the problem here. I have no issue with the pursuit of equality, but equity is a whole other matter. The underlying philosophy of equity embodied in this ordinance is untenable under our Constitution and necessitates the ongoing and ever-changing assessment Constitution and necessitates the ongoing and ever-changing assessment and control of a third party to force different outcomes for different people. The proposed pursuit of fairness in implementing equity policies inevitably results in just the opposite. Within the equity framework, it is inescapable to treat some as more equal than others, to quote George Orwell's Animal Farm, which also by necessity requires that someone decide who is more equal than the actions required to correct the inequities. We are a nation of individuals, not a nation of groups. Our constitution, unique around the world, was written for individuals, not groups. And to categorize people into groups to be treated differently than others is unfair and unequal. It flies in the face of what makes this nation stand out above all others. To the individuals of this county whom you were elected to represent, this ordinance will enshrine and empower you or your science to power to decide who is more and less equal. It will lead to taking freedoms and assets from those deemed less equal and bestowing the same to the more equal. By passing this ordinance, you demean everyone in Pierce County, even those who you propose to create fairness for. It is insulting, damaging, and dangerous. Like you told me by saying that for the last 20 years, I've been the only white member in an almost all-black church. And it was very refreshing in the past to see the focus on race kind of fade. But recently, it seems to be the only focus. And by doing so, you're creating the problem by that. We shouldn't be focused on this. This is divisive. It divides us into tribal camps and is going to result in damage and destruction. I urge you no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right, next we have Aaron. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, this is Lance Aaron Montgomery. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you well.
Okay. Vote no on ordinance 2023-36, the establishment of the Commission on Equity. It is a leftist socialist measure that seeks to fundamentally transform the foundation of Pierce County government. This D E I agenda places selective and artificial importance prioritizing one ethnic group over another. That goes against American value of equality. Equity is not equality. Equity is unfair to one group or another because someone decides who's important and who is not. This is blatantly wrong. These racist attempts to divide us are un-American. They attempt to reverse the gains of the civil rights era, that all men and women are created equal and should be treated as such, as emphasized in our U.S. and Washington state constitutions. Whilst the stated objectives of this ordinance may appear commendable on the surface, a closer examination reveals underlying concerns that threaten the core principles upon which America was founded. First, it reeks of ideological agenda. The promise of fairness often devolves into divisive and harmful policies with the potential for the propagation of divisive ideologies such as critical race theory. Secondly, it is a threat to duly-elected representative government. The Commission on Equality, excuse me, the Commission on Equity should, could easily become a politically charged gatekeeper stacked with activists. This unelected body could exert undue influence over Pierce County's decisions, effectively sidelining the voice of the people and undermining our democratic process. Thirdly, it hinders free speech and individual liberties. When government bodies are entrusted with imposing ever-changing speech and behavior codes, they risk stifling open discourse and infringing upon our fundamental rights to express our beliefs freely. Furthermore, we must protect the preservation of our principles. This measure threatens to replace the foundational principles of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness with a bureaucratic focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. In addition, it has a negative financial impact and continual and increasing financial burden on our county. As Representative Stewart's of taxpayer dollars, we must question whether this represents the best allegation of resources, especially when there are pressing needs demanding attention like fixing roads, building infrastructure, and fighting crime, not pushing on a leftist social agenda on citizens of this county. In closing, in a line with our Constitution, every race, gender, ethnicity should be valued equally, not favored, weighted, or shunned by some county bureaucrat playing favorites based on their personal or political bias, agenda, or motives.
Thank you.
All right, next hand, we have last name ending in N A V A R E. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Vince Navar.
Thank you, Vince.
District Four. Yes. Good afternoon, Council and Chair. I didn't want to say this at first, but I am a person of color. I have African slave, Hispanic, European, and Native blood flowing through my veins. I feel bad for my white brothers and sisters that are being silenced over issues like this. And reading through the ordinance, I didn't go too far before finding the section on definitions. What jumped out to me in the definitions is that there is a desire to achieve promoting, understanding, identifying, and eliminating laws, policies, systems, and practices. This is very dangerous. And again, supporting every person with access to resources they need to thrive. It is obvious that this equity is a redistribution of resources. According to public administration literature, equity is defined by George Reverendson as an administered political economy in which shares are adjusted so citizens are made equal. The only difference between equity and socialism here is the type of property or shares that are distributed. Equity deals with social and cultural capital in addition to economic. This process is not only deleterious to the American way of life and Western civilization, it's also a direct attack against individual rights that we all currently enjoy, whether we believe it or not, and all at the same time violating our anti-discrimination constitutional rights. All the council members swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington. The Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, the Sixth and Seventh Titles of the Civil Rights Act of 64, to include H.R. 5, the Equality Act of 2021, RCW 49.60.030 and .040, promised freedom from discrimination in the state of Washington and in the country. All of these anti-discrimination statutes require that we do not discriminate based on protected characteristics, either positively or negatively. By continuing to look at things through race, ethnicity, gender lens, and making decisions and policy accordingly, we are violating our equal opportunity and anti-discrimination laws that are already on the books. They have improved our condition and served us very well in recent decades. I've lived in this county in my condition for over 60 years. I'm a senior as well. This Marxist socialist control of societies has proven to be destructive of life and liberty when carefully examining regimes in history who have adopted those policies and ideologies. Let us not move whatsoever and ever so slightly in that direction. Please vote no on ordinance 2023-36.
Thank you, Vince.
Next, we have Sally Perkins. Please state your name for the record.
Sally Perkins, District Four. I am here in enthusiastic support of proposal 2023-36, the Commission on Equity. I have been working on this topic for a long time and have followed the progress of the public review and the Equity Review Committees carefully. You each appointed stellar people from your districts to serve on the Equity Review Committee. I was very encouraged when their key recommendation was to establish this commission. A number of the members of the ERC then assisted county council staff to draft proposal 2023-36. Your appointments to the ERC have had real staying power. I want to commend Mr. William Bridges of County Council Staff and Ms. Julie DeMuth of the County Finance Department for their diligent and thorough work on equity matters, including the commission. Their in-depth work assures that the county will engage in this equity work in a robust and meaningful way. We live in a beautifully diverse county. We have mountains and prairies and forests and saltwater and freshwater and small towns and suburbs and cities. We are diverse people, diverse in age and gender and racial/ethnic background. We speak many languages. Some of us are triathloners or soccer players. Others of us may have restrictions on how we can get around or how well we see or hear. Some of us make the big bucks, some of us not so much. Some of us struggle with mental health challenges or chronic illness while others experience few health concerns. What we all have in common is we all live in Pierce County. Together, we are Pierce County. In terms of equity, what does this mean? Well, first, it means we are called to want the best for all of our neighbors, no matter how different their life circumstances might be from ours. And then second, we look at our systems and policies and practices to see if they, however inadvertently, might disadvantage some of our neighbors. If you use a power chair and live in a part of the county with no sidewalks, that's inequitable. If you have mental health challenges and live in a part of the county that does not have mental health services, that's inequitable. If your primary language is not English and the instructions on how to use county services are not available in your language, that's inequitable. If we look at our data and see that there are patterns of disproportionality or disparities, that's inequitable. The policy solutions around equity belong to this body, the county council. The debate should be lively about whether policies are equitable or how inequities might need to be addressed. The Commission on Equity is your key partner in providing a place where existing inequities can be identified and documented and where possible inequities can be explored and either verified or refuted and where innovative ideas for solutions can be generated. I urge you to vote unanimously to create the Commission on Equity for all of us here in Pierce County. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Next, we have Latoya Brackett. Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I hit it wrong. Hello, can you hear me?
Dr. Brackett, we can hear you.
All right, I pushed the button too fast, so I kind of missed it. My apologies. So my name is Dr. Latoya Brackett. I am a professor in the area. I am a Pierce County resident, District Five, and I'm speaking on behalf of this. And I just wanted to put in there some context and history of, I was actually suggested to be on the Equity Review Committee beginning in 2021. We are now in 2023. And we had long discussion publicly on Zoom, to the extent that one of our members actually had threats made to him, in which constituents could come online and they could ask questions at the end or pose conversation. So they got to see the work that we did as Equity Review Committee. So that is also reference to it being public, but it's okay because sometimes we can't be there for everything. And that's what we're also trying to speak of, of why we need this commission, right? Because not everybody can do everything. So I just wanted to share that there was years of collaboration, debate, feedback, learning, and hope created, and it created this proposed commission, not to force anything, but to be a committee where all voices can and will be heard. I really hope people that are uncertain about this because they're saying they just learned about it, actually read the document. We even gave history so that people could have that context and make sure that they understood what went into this. And so the committee only gives insight and suggestions. I think that that is really key. We, this committee, if, I don't think I'll be on it necessarily, but this committee would be giving, or this commission would be giving insights and feedback and do the deep dive that our elected officials cannot do. That is the point of it. And at the end of the day, it's your elected officials that make these decisions. And so as, I think it's important for people to pay attention to, this isn't, there's, unfortunately, as much as this commission sounds like it has a lot of power, one of the things that we had to talk about consistently was, there is no direct, there's only suggestions and giving enough information to inform those that we elect to pay attention to everyone that is in need and trying to make policies, procedures, and those things more equitable. And I just want to share, I also want to share my apologies unfortunately to all of you who did not know or you think that, or this is the first time that you've heard of this. And trust me, I have been there many times where you're like, wait, where'd this come from? And I want to encourage you, as the councilwoman Prue said, that if you really want to serve, then you will be there. And she also is able to appoint someone to this commission. So speak to your constituents, speak to your elected officials about being a part of this. And also for those that are against it because of fear that maybe you will be pushed out or denied something, well, that's why equity's definition in our proposal is written the way it is, because there's a historical component to this. And trust me, a lot of us already know exactly how you think you're going to feel. We just feel it. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Brackett.
Next, we have Dan Hudson. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. This is Dan Hudson. I live in Pierce County. I only learned of this last night and I have learned a good bit in this meeting and have adjusted my comments extensively as we go along. But honestly, I've got to say that this committee is named with a very inflammatory word, equity. It's, it is divisive. It is a banner that the left-leaning progressives use extensively. And actually, as a conservative, it's made me feel uncomfortable. It has made me feel unsafe. Maybe I could sit in that open chair that was talked about before, but honestly, I'm not afraid. I'm here to express and to listen, no longer afraid. And I'm not afraid of diversity. I am afraid of how equity is often used to push toward equal outcomes and tears away at what I feel like the fabric of equality is. I would like to see more specifics about what this committee is going to bring up. And there have been some mentions by the people talking here. I am glad to hear that. Ultimately, I request that you table this until you can get more people on board, get them less concerned about what equity means to you, so that we understand what you intend to do with this. When I see the words in the thing of systemic racism, most of the people I ask about it really can't define it. Or they give me examples, they give examples that could be debated in other means. And so I end up scratching my head and become very resistant when you say equity takes precedence over equality. I can see there being the right time and place for certain initiatives and I would like those to be considered, you know, as they are brought up. People have said in this meeting that they're not represented. Well, yes, they are. We have elected seven of you to represent your districts and all the people, their diversity, their different needs, you know, whatever it takes to get them on there. I just don't see why we need yet another appointed group of people to make these recommendations or to provide inputs, because I feel like I probably wouldn't be able to get a seat at the table. I'm white, I'm conservative, I'm male, and I think I probably don't stand a chance to work with my fellow county members in this. Fifteen years, I disagree that you pay anyone, or I disagree with your compensation plan, that you pay everyone or you pay no one. Equal pay for equal work. This goes way back and it really puts women in the dark. Thank you very much for listening to my words. Good day.
Thank you for being with us.
Next, we have Trish. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Trish Otterholt. I live in District Four and so Councilmember Mello is my representative. Anyway, I want to say I would really urge you to vote no against this, vote no against the 2023-36, because it, I agree with everyone that has spoken out against it. It's, it is harmful. It is divisive. I mean, and it could lead to more harmful and divisive policies. I mean, and it could lead to more harmful and divisive policies. It impacts so many things. And, and I haven't seen or heard anywhere where these kind of policies have made things any better. We talk about wanting to see unity in our society. It seems like everywhere I hear of the equity being brought up, the diverse, diversity, equity, and inclusion being brought up, there is more anger, more divisiveness, more racism, more bias, and, and racism is racism, like the gentleman before said. And, you know, it, there's a lot of people being maligned, and I thought the idea was to create a sense of unity within a neighborhood, within a city, within a state. I don't see that happening. I see it as getting worse. I don't think this is a good solution. If you, I mean, if it's, if this group has already been established, then I also disagree with paying them any compensation. I think it was Councilmember Krueger brought up the fact, one of her amendments was that they should not be compensated, that none of the other people that serve on any of the other commissions are compensated. That creates more inequality. Like the gentleman before me said, either they all get paid a stipend or nobody gets paid. And you do have the ability to go on by Zoom meetings, and it, sometimes it's just not the right time in your life to serve. I've done volunteer work all of my life, and my husband and I ran a business together for over 35 years. I still found time to do volunteer work, but there were times in my life that I could not volunteer because I had too many other commitments. So you can't make it, make equity where everybody gets to serve, no matter what else is going on in their life. And it, and it seemed like, it seemed like she was kind of treated very poorly when she made her suggested amendments, and that bothered me, too. It can tell the difference. Anyway, as again, I agree with people that have spoken at it against this, and you can put me down as being against it also. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us.
Next, we have Melissa. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Melissa Knott. I am calling in today in support of this ordinance. I wholeheartedly agree with the speaker who said that equity and equality are not the same thing, because when we have equality, it means that we're giving every single person the same thing. So if I'm standing in line to get a pair of shoes and I wear a size nine and the person behind me wears a size five, and I'm handed a size five because every single person receives the same thing, those shoes are going to do me no good, not one bit. They're going to be okay for the person behind me who is a size five. Equality means that somebody is going to hand me a pair of size nine shoes. And if people want to equate that to me calling socialism, let's go ahead and just change shoes into roller skates. When we go to a roller rink, we need to walk up to the counter and say, I wear a size nine. They're going to hand me a size nine. That is equity. Equality means that I do not get what I need. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
And I see no hand, no hands at this time, Chair. No other hands. Wait, actually, a hand just went up. Jacqueline. Please state your name for the record.
Good day. My name is Jacqueline Brunson. I would like to talk about this in aspect of voting no. One of the things that I definitely do not like is that it is confusing about what exactly this committee is going to be doing and not doing and what exactly equity means. I think there's been, a lot of people have that question of like, what exactly is this going to do? So I feel like this definitely should be tabled because there's just so much confusion. And you can see that many people have talked from many different districts. I'm from District Three, and they feel the same way. They're very confused about like exactly what this committee's going to do. One of the issues that I have is definitely that the sunset amendment was put down, because I think that would have definitely, you know, given people some more calm about this, because there would be a five-year decision about what to do afterwards. And then again, like one of the chairs said, I think from my district, I don't remember your name, that it would help us be able to get out of things that we've put ourselves in. And I don't think, I don't feel like I want a committee who's unelected to start putting us into agreements that we can't get out of years later, especially when there's so many negative feelings about this. I, from the research, it said that the 2024 fiscal note expenditure is predicted to be $356,520, on top of, I'm guessing on top of the $200 that they would get for every time they showed up. So this is a lot of money for our county, a county who is experiencing rises in crime, rises in homelessness, as well as lots of problems just financially getting food. And I don't feel like that there is enough data and enough research to show that these equity committees are even valuable and that they do the work that they say they're going to do. There's no data, there's no research, and it's a lot of money that could be spent in other ways. For example, lowering the crime in Tacoma, which is really horrible. People, children are getting murdered, held up at gunpoint. You know, there's homeless people doing drugs right on the school steps. There has been people who've been chopped apart and left in parking lots at KFC. There's been so much crime, and where I'm at here in Roy, the crime has been going up and up and up. Homelessness has been going up and up and up, and the lines at the food banks are going, becoming longer and longer. And I feel like that this is just a waste of money that could be used for things that people actually need right now in this moment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being with us.
All right, next, we have Janelle. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Janelle Costani. I live in University Place, so I'm in District Four. And I'm asking that you vote no on this, on this issue of 2023-36. Equity boards, just using the word equity, it, 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 it tells me that you guys are talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion ideology. When put into practice, this type of ideology always demands undue influence, pressure, power, and control to drive all decisions, whether in an agency, a business, or a government. They become rigid ideological enforcers, which inevitably suppress free flow of ideas, debate, and speech as people start to self-censor their thoughts and beliefs. In DEI ideology, it is made very clear which beliefs are acceptable. If you do not toe the ideological line, you are risking job, career, and livelihood. This in itself is against the freedoms our country is founded on. When we don't know the truth, because people are not free to speak the truth, we cannot make the right decisions for our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being with us.
And there's no other hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. Well, seeing no further hands in the Zoom room, we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to bring it back to the council. I'm going to ask for final remarks by councilmembers, and I'm going to ask councilmembers, I'm only going to call on each member once during this debate, so please feel free to make your comments, but I'll only call on you once during debate. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. And, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of discussion on this today. We've seen a lot of interest in this. But I am going to break down a little bit, a little bit more on the history of this because I think it's relevant to some of the things I have to say today. And I apologize to some constituents who just now just learned about this, but this all started with a public review committee that came out. I think it came out in about 2020. And its job at that time was to conduct a comprehensive examination of various departments in the, in the county and the judicial branch to assess their policies and procedures. And as a result of that, a criminal justice work group was formed out of that. And that was to analyze criminal data in the county. And based on those findings with that criminal justice work group, the public review committee put forth a couple recommendations, and I'm going to talk about two of those. And one of them was to further analyze the criminal data, and the other one was to implement some diversity, equity, and inclusion policies. So there was, the public review committee had a sunset on it also. So subsequently, in 2021, an Equity Review Committee, we've had one already, folks, was formed, and a few of the folks that served on the public review committee rolled over in the Equity Review Committee. And that was there to establish and to specifically address and provide recommendations, more, more recommendations on DEI. So the committee was aimed to have, one of the things that they were focused on, and there was many, many different priorities, and I'm going to talk about this one, was to have a policy ready, I think in the fall time from whenever this committee was formed, of a DIE policy that they could look over from the executive. That, after a lot of work on that, we got one. And we have one now. People think that this is new. Right now, we have one. And we have had reports since 2021, we had goals of what our DEI policies would be. And one of the goals was to have 34.4% in our, as employees here in the county. They didn't set a date on that, but that was going to be the, going to be the, one of the goals. And in 2021, I think we were at 21.3. And as we've moved forward, we've had reports in 2022, seeing that those numbers are going For the 2022, we have 24.1 diverse employees in here. It's going up. We have 48.9 females that work for the county, so we're seeing these things. With these DEI policies, we had classes. In 2021, I think we had seven LGBTQ plus classes for employees. We had several DEI learning classes for employees in 2021. In 2022, we had several more. We had nine LGBTQ plus classes, and we added a government-to-government tribal relations. So this is showing that out of the temporary Equity Review Committee, we came up with some policies, and they're here. They're here today. And these initiatives have proven to be effective in promoting diversity, inclusion here within the county. And the county also passed, you know, equity notes. We have things that are here. We're here. And I'm not going to talk for all the council, but I believe that this council takes inclusion and diversity very seriously, this council and councils before us. And the reason why I know that, I know that for this council and the councils before us, because I was on those committees. I was on the Public Review Committee before I was a council member. I was also on the Equity Review Committee, and we digested a lot of work out of that. So, you know, being on those committees, I saw the county taking this as an, as a proactive approach into something that we didn't have before and putting it in place versus, let's say a hypothetical thing, let's say like another jurisdiction was forced to implement a DEI policies because of some type of crisis or a national government intervention or something like that. I saw that the county thought that this stuff was important, and they created those two committees. The committees convened, and we got some policies out of it, and they're here today. We also have within our departments, internal equity committees within our own departments, and I think they're called different things, but we have some within our departments. And they're compromised of staff from diverse backgrounds, so we already have that. And they're doing work to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in the community and in our workplace for the department. So this is showing, we already have this here. And, you know, given the current progress and success of our diversity, inclusion efforts here in Pierce County, that's here already, I don't think we need a permanent commission solely on equity right now. We're already here. The ink hasn't even dried of what we got going here, you know? I think we don't need a permanent commission right now, looking for a key when the doors are already open here. So that's, that's what I'm going to say for today, and I'll take it back to the Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Herrera, for the historical look back on the important work that kind of gotten us to where we are today. I had a lot of thoughts before, a lot of thoughts that came up during public comment. I'm going to try and just choose one area that I'm going to focus on, but happy to engage with community members after the fact. When we talk about why it is so important to have a commission that is focused on equity, the comments we heard today are why. We need to have a better dialogue and understanding of what we're talking about when we're making policies and why we would go and talk to community members that are going to be impacted by those policies. And so one of the things I'm just going to highlight, looking at the why this is important, the Public Review Committee was established because there were disparities in our criminal justice system. There are disparities not related to the county government in our education system. There are disparities when you talk about wages. There's disparities when you talk about homeownership. And if we truly had equality and equity, but if we wanted to just use founding documents, equality, if everybody was treated equally, the way it is interpreted by some of the conversations we've heard today, we wouldn't see disparities. We would see the same ratios of those incarcerated, owning homes, graduating high school, and accessing healthcare based on their population in this county. And right now, in our juvenile facilities, 32% of the population is black, which you're like, that's not a very big number. But when you talk about the fact that they're only 16-ish percent, someone correct me if I'm wrong, of the population, there's a problem. 70% of the population in Pierce County is white. 39% of the population in juvenile hall right now is white. The problems are apparent in the systems that have been created by those in power over time, and that is why we need an equity commission to work on this. It's hard. It gets frustrating, and it creates tension. They need staff so that they are supported, because those hard conversations take time. It takes time to look at data, and it takes purpose. But if we don't change things, if we keep doing the same things we've always been doing, we will get the same results. People will be injured, people will die, people will not be happy and healthy and thriving in Pierce County. And that is what I'm hoping. That's a lot to push, put on a volunteer commission, by the way. But that is what I need them to do. I need them to provide that information so we can have that work and dialogue. So I will leave it at that, but if you have further comments, please feel free to reach out to my office. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Councilmember Morell.
Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinion on this. And I really, truly appreciate all the comments that have been brought forward. Civility is something that I talk about all the time within government and amongst council members. And when we can get together and discuss our differences, we can spotlight them and get a better understanding, because we only view things through a certain lens. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about what Councilmember Herrera kind of discussed Because I'm kind of the guy who started all this. Back in 2020, after the George Floyd incident, there was civil unrest around the nation. And Tacoma was engaging, and it was part of what we saw. It was, most, I don't think any council members sitting at this dais were on the council at that time. I know Councilmember Campbell was here. And I decided at that point, after looking out the window and seeing a group assembling down on Tacoma Avenue, to go down and just have a chat. I met a friend of mine, former council member Tim Farrell down there. I joined with him in the group and Mayor Woodard's to do a protest march around Tacoma, just to bring attention to what, at that point, was the lack of police accountability. After that, I came back to the office, and there were two people that were still here. Chair Richardson and Chief of Staff Chris Carlson was here. And I said, I want to make sure Pierce County is applying justice fairly in all departments. On the council, we are a legislative branch. We don't control the other departments. There are elected officials, sheriff, prosecutor, the auditor, assessor treasurer, that we really can't tell them what to do. But what we did was we sat down, and for about four hours, we hashed out a resolution, R 2020-43. Just going to read you some excerpts from that. And in the "whereas" section, it says, "We value community inclusivity through two keys, fundamental premises, that all citizens should be and should see themselves as respected, contributing members of the community. And all citizens should be bound by a common set of principles based on fairness of treatment, recognition of rights, acceptance of responsibilities, commitment to equality, and dedication to expanding opportunities to all. We included in that the community of considerable racial, ethnic, religious, and other types of diversity. Pierce County has a complex history, which includes both significant efforts to achieve greater justice, equality, and understanding, as well as unfortunate periods and events that have demonstrated the need to increase commitment, transparency, ideas, and action and work towards these goals. The increasing imperative that we, as a county, assume the responsibility of facing the challenges and seizing the opportunities created through diversity, and our diversity guided by the principles that all citizens are created equal, and the rights of every citizen is diminished when the rights of one is threatened." That's the premise of how we all started the Justice Review Committee. And all departments signed on to this resolution. And as Councilmember Herrera said, he was on that committee. And that committee had the task to look at all departments and give us their feedback. And it took them well over a year to do that. And we've got a lot of information back, and we implemented almost everything that they brought back. The executive put forward, some of you remember, a four-page document that showed all the goals that were set out. And as Councilmember Herrera indicated, a lot of those goals have been met. Followed that resolution up with Resolution Number 20-76, which I wrote with my friend Connie Lattenberg. And it was the establishment of a public review committee that was necessary to, there again, assess each department and inform the county council on developments of actions for equitable, diverse, inclusive, and fair policies and procedures. Again, the committee came back, we accepted their resolution or their acknowledgements, and a lot of changes have been made, led to Resolution Number 2021-109, that myself and Chair Ryan Mello put together. It has the dubious honor of having the longest title, I think, of any council resolution. But there was a lot of subject matter there. And there again, we started down a road of establishing a equity review committee. And I think, I say that because we spun off that Resolution Number 2021-108S, which was Councilmember Campbell's resolution on Equity Index. And Equity Index, every policy that we make, every decision that we make, is now being measured off a Equity Index. And the Equity Index, or Equity Note, just allows us better tools to assess the impact of our work and allows us to make sure we're supporting every community in Pierce County. So we have done a lot of work, as Councilmember Herrera said. I think at this point, we need to take kind of a breath and take a look and see how all these new policies, procedures, we just, the Rules Committee just got a report from HR about all the changes that they've made with DE and I moving forward, and they will be implementing those. So I think at this time, there again, I do not see the need to put a permanent committee together. I see that we do need to review from time to time how we're doing, but I do not believe that we need to enshrine a new committee on equity pertaining to looking at what else we have to do. Sure, we always have something that needs to move forward. But for me, I can pretty much bet that, you know, when we talk about volunteerism to committees, I have served probably on more committees than anyone on this council. And, you know, I could name them all off. And that was prior to obviously being elected. But I had a passion for public service. I ran a company. I have four kids. In my early days, I'll admit it, I had food stamps, and it was a struggle. Because in my work, you're only good as your last job. But I knew that volunteering was something that I needed to do. I didn't expect to get paid for it. I just did it, because I, that was an outlet for me. And to me, paying for volunteerism, I think, is a slippery slope. We have over 50 committees that this council has put together, and they operate on a regular basis. I think if we're going to pay, then I think we need to have everyone get paid. And the reason why a lot of our committees do not have the economic indicators that we were told about is because a lot of the committees take certain expertise, people who have been in the industry for a long time. Thus, they command a good salary. There's nothing wrong with that. So I don't know if we can use that as a barometer on why we should pay people, but I think in all fairness, if we're going to offer it to one, we should offer it to all. So this council has spent millions of dollars on re-skilling and upskilling opportunities right here in Tacoma. There is an opportunity, if you want to move up, to learn a trade, to upskill, there is an opportunity that you could do that today. Just go over to Workforce Central and sign up. So there is plenty of opportunities that we have all around us. And sometimes, you know, we, we point fingers at why some certain people are, do not have the ability to take care of themselves or to move forward. And, you know, there is plenty of opportunities out there. You just need to seek them out. And I think there again, we have those opportunities. So for me, right now, I am not going to support this resolution, even though I understand how everything came together. I would support a review from time to time on how the county is doing. But to enshrine or instill a permanent committee, I think there again, is getting out in front of this too far. And, you know, as an elected official, I have a pretty good pulse on what's in my district. And my district is definitely, operates, from what I have been, and there again, I've only been on the council for five years now, they're very fair and just within Council District One. And I feel that moving forward with this committee may just drive more wedges than is necessary. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would hope for a no vote on this resolution. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Councilmember Krueger, followed by Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm kind of, I've got a lot, I'm thinking about and a lot I want to say that's not in what I had written down, but I want to thank you for the council members for putting into context, you know, the history on this, which helps give me a much better understanding. And I appreciate the chair indulging me with my three amendments that I popped in here. That's kind of the way it goes with legislation. Things come to you at the last minute, you're distracted with other things. And before I started, in my, my thoughts and my research, I wanted to address, I appreciate, Ms. Coggan, your background and the story you told. I come from a small town, and we had a swimming pool, and we could get waterproof, but the towns around me didn't have one, and they had, you know, get the kids bussed in in order to do that. So we do the best we can with, with what we've got. And Mr. McDonald, when you were up there talking, you know, in your TV voice, you've got your speaker's voice, and I could hear the words of MLK and wanting to have everything with equal. And I agree with that. I didn't disagree with you at all. And the folks had left with the gal that had spoken about the internet, and absolutely, that's a commerce tool that can help raise everybody. And I don't look at that as an equity issue. That's, that's a utility that we want everyone to have, and we're already trying to do that. And I apologize if I didn't speak up earlier, if that was me mumbling. My voice doesn't carry, and I don't always recognize that. But I wanted to, you know, also say, I think this might be one of my favorite council meetings, although it has been a lot of work, but it has been a lot of information that is given, a lot of voices that are heard that have come in, and I appreciate all of the messages and the things that I have learned from that. But I'm going to be starting out with, yes, I am asking for a no vote on this measure today, because I see it as something that is foundational and transformational legislation. And it's through research and the years that I have been in this industry and that I, that I say that. I say that it sets up a framework to restructure society through behavior and values modification, stemming from a belief that this county needs a commission to find inequities. And it's difficult to pinpoint why I'm so strongly against the creation of another commission, because there's so much to unpack in this ordinance. And just to sidebar, granted, we have been working on this issue for quite some time. However, it is a new chapter and a newly codified commission, so I don't want it to be, you know, into semantics that it's not new, it's not old, whatever. That's, that's not the point. But I look at what its purpose is, and it says, promote equity. And I think from today's testimonies from folks, we can say that it's a very subjective word, and I believe it has an endless mission. And this commission is not an ordinary commission. So it is to seek and identify obstacles that impede all people from having access to resources and opportunities necessary to achieve their full potential. And then develop policies and actions to ensure the elimination of any obstacles for that person. So I don't really even know today what my full potential is. How can a body determine that for someone individually? And I see that these policies and actions will then become recommendations to the council, and we rarely reject these recommendations. We may modify, we don't always take them, but we respect all the work that a committee goes through, and we want to be able to embrace things that they bring to us. And I, and I look at history, and I believe that this concept of equity was once tried in a town in Indiana back in 1825. And that town was New Harmony, and it was led by a man named Robert Owen, and the term Owenism was coined, referring to his two-year experiment. You may want to look that up. And I see that the methods that are listed to use, hearing, engaging, and collaborating with the community, the community are groups, not individuals. They're made up of individuals, but it's still a group. And there being a conduit between them and decision-makers. This restructures our political system based on individualism, not groups. And we have elected representatives to serve that purpose. This commission diminishes the direct voice and influence of constituents to their elected officials. It creates this artificial division of recognized authority, which is what this commission would be, that recognized authority between elected officials and their constituents. Right now, the language access is what is stressed, having that access to different language. And the ability to communicate accurately is extremely important. I get that. But what I predict will become the louder voice is housing for all, income for all. The UBI, Universal Basic Income, is a The UBI, Universal Basic Income, is a project of the state, it was a project of the city of Tacoma. It's been part of the dialogue across this country. I see transportation for all. And it's in the speeches that I hear and in the grants that I review that I see these things. So it's, you know, doing the best we can to help the most with what we have is one thing. But to mandate it in policies means that wealth must be transferred to the government to implement the policy to achieve the access to resources for all goal. So, you know, we don't know what the commission will develop for policies. It's their mission, is a very tall order for any group to discern and achieve. But there are toolkits created to help us predict what could be in the findings of this commission. And one I found considers, it's from the United Way, it's called "Strengthening Our Equity Muscle to Accelerate Impact." Says you'll find guidance here to carefully think through and prepare the decision of your race, equity, and inclusion efforts. The organizing framework for this section was provided by the Interaction Institute for Social Change. I haven't had the time to look them up yet. I don't know, you know, where they come from. But the links in this particular website is "Build Equity-Minded Cultures, Structures, and Systems. Nurture a Diverse Equity-Minded Workforce. Nurture a Diverse Equity-Minded Board. Tell Stories Centered on People and Systems. Design Programs and Policies That Are Targeted and Universal." So I just see this as where, you know, everybody needs to get on the same page, thinking the same way. And I don't think that's how we can better ourselves or raise all boats. And also, I had a conversation, I was at a meeting where there was a licensed psychiatrist, he was also a medical doctor. And he urged me to oppose any DEI dogma that is anti-individualism and pro-group identity. He said it's counter-therapeutic to choose, select, and promote by skid color or sex over an individual. So who or what and what else is influencing this equity movement? So I ask, well, of course, it's the United Nations. You know, they've got a thing on eliminating racism through Agenda 20, or the SDGs. And in this, they refer to the influence of the SPIC, he called it. It's the Society for the Psychological Study of Social Issues, an organization of social scientists that has historically brought research to bear on a wide array of societal problems. SPIC was organized during the Depression of the 1930s in an attempt to bring together a national group of socially-minded psychologists to address social and economic issues. And so, you know, we add to that the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which when I first began studying or trying to research this DEI concept when it was coming to the county, I don't know, was it seven years ago? You know, I was finding documents in the colleges and some of their departments where they were endorsing and signing on to the Sustainable Development Goals and the International Human Rights Declaration. It's like, we're just humans who are already inherently very diverse, yet influencers want to make us all have the same. And so, and what's crazy, I hear, they call math racist, they call grammar racist, so let's, you know, eliminate AP classes. And I don't know if anyone remembers, there was a guy named James Spady. I went to one of his meetings when I was at the legislature, it must have been about 17 years ago, and he had a program called Citizen Counselor. He even dropped an initiative, one day, pulled it the next day, that was creating this program with having counselors that are out in the community, they're not elected representatives. And that might be something that would be interesting to look up. And, you know, I'm not going to begrudge the human heart that wants to help those in need. That's our inherent nature here. But we have a civic duty to have services available, and we do. Councilmember Morell just mentioned several of them. And I don't know of anyone who disagree with that. But government should not be charged with being the arbitrator for fairness. I know there's a barrage of grant money available for this concept. It's become a multi-billion dollar industry, but it is not without legal problems. I Googled states sue to get out of DEI, and there are lawsuits that we should be considering. I also found, in fact, in Seattle, here is one, judge says race-based lawsuit against Seattle can proceed. So it was a former employee who is suing for discrimination. And this creates too many avenues for folks to think, well, I didn't get what I should get, and someone else thinks I didn't get what I should get. And so we should be gleaning from our constituents personally with what their issues are, not secondhand. And so with that, thank you for indulging me, Chair, and I appreciate a no vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowver. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you very well.
Some people ask why. Why do we look at equity? I represent some of the most challenged parts of Pierce County. We'll take Parkland. Someone born in Parkland today will live 10 to 12 years less on average than people raised in other parts of Pierce County a few miles away. Why equity? Because people are dying. They're dying younger. And these are things that are just the results of systemic problems or systemic lack of investment over the years. We have more investment, we have more policies, plans coming forward. Where should we do the most good? That's what equity looks at. Where can that dollar save the most lives? Where can that dollar spent help the most people? I heard about a need for more food banks out in Roy. Looking equity, I'm going to guess Roy isn't the only place that needs it. And unless someone's advocating for community, we're going to assume they have their needs because they're not advocating. But if we look at it through equity, the data will tell us where we need to be going, not just to the loudest voices, not to the most connected, but to the area of greatest need. That's why equity. And I understand, and I want to step back and thank hundreds of people who sent us emails, phone calls, showed up tonight, spoke, just listened, leaned into the conversation. I grew up on a small farm in Nebraska. I saw all kinds of inequities around us, as we would see this community get help and this community not get help. And when I, when people first started talking to me about equity, I was a white guy who grew up in Nebraska. What did I know? I recoiled from it too. This seemed so foreign. I didn't understand it. What I didn't do was hardened. I leaned in and listened. I asked others to explain it to me more. And through some very in-depth and sometimes very painful conversations, I began to understand that we may have all been created equally, but we are not all treated equally in our communities. But how do we find that out as a council? Sure, people come talk to us, but we need more than just anecdotal stories. We need someone who's looking at this and digging down and finding the data and saying, this is what you need to do, but not just because I say so. Here's all the data to back it up. If you don't trust what we're saying, even though you appointed us, then here's the data. Just look at the data. We'll just bring it forward. There's been a lot of concern about this committee being unelected body. We have 50 boards and commissions that we've appointed over the years. And this committee, by virtue of the way that it is set up, seven members, one from each council member, if you want to get engaged, call your council member. And the rest of the recommendations come from the executive's office. You know, right now, most of the recommendations for people to be on this committee would come from someone elected under the Republican Party. And so when we hear that this is going to be some strong leftist group, I'm questioning who some of my colleagues are appointing that are going to do that. I know I've put forward some very well on previous committees. I just put forward people who are thoughtful, people who are going to engage in conversation and listen. And I think that's who we'll all look to put on there. People who are going to advise us what we do for all of our boards and commissions. What I don't think we've done, we've done tremendous work. Thank you, Councilmember Herrera, for your service. Thank you, Councilmember Morell, for your leadership over the years on this and keeping through with it. But I can't say we're done. I can't say, well, we've done enough, because I've still got people living 10 years less. I still got communities without sidewalks, without streetlights. We still have inequities all around us. We still have people without broadband. So we haven't done enough. I spoke to this in the study session, and it was brought up again tonight about the founding fathers, building this community on an equal nation, that we're all equal. The Constitution of the United States starts out with the challenge to make a more perfect union. That word "more" is important, because that means that it's a living document, one that gets better with time. Thank God for that. It's why we have 27 direct amendments to it, to bring back, to bring equity and equality into the Constitution, because when it was first formed, not everyone had the right to vote. When it was first formed, Indians weren't even considered population. They weren't even given status as people, and other populations were given the status of three-fifths of a person. So to say that we had equality when our country was founded, it was not. But we've worked as a nation to become a more perfect union. And this gets us towards being that more perfect union. Yeah, equity is hard to define. It moves, it changes what we need. So does justice, freedom, liberty, and the general welfare of the people, all mentioned in the opening of the Constitution, as words that are something that we work towards. We work to be more equitable. We've done great work. Why do we want to step away now and wait for another crisis and then say, oh, it's time to do it again? We don't need to be moving from time, from crisis to crisis. Our challenge is to be elected leaders in our community, leading us to where we need to be, leading us to a more perfect union, leading us to be the Pierce County that we really can be. And that is everyone having that access to opportunity. I encourage a yes vote today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Chair. And some of my comments will echo Councilmember Campbell's as well as some of my colleagues today. I also appreciate everyone who came today in person and everyone who has emailed over the last couple of days. I really appreciate the history of the boards and committees that came before us, that was shared by Councilmember Morell and Herrera and your involvement in those committees and boards. You're absolutely right, these boards and committees made incredible progress. And you're right that they opened the doors that have provided us with some amazing opportunities for progress today. And to me, that proves the effectiveness of having boards and commissions made up of diverse people that can guide us and give recommendations and can tell us their experiences and can check us when we're going in one direction that might have unintended consequences for certain groups and give us some perspectives on a better way. The success of the groups in the past proves to me that we can lift all ships much better if we are making sure that everyone is on board and everyone is contributing, especially ideas that we may not have, we may not bring to the table because of our experiences. And so that's exactly why I think we need to continue and have a permanent equity commission. We need this commission to help us walk through that door, to help us continue to make progress and make great achievements in this area. And those achievements should not be scary to people. And I'm feeling a little bit of that, and I felt that expressed in some of the emails today. And I'm afraid that maybe there's been some misinformation or some of the concepts have been misconstrued, there's maybe some new definitions out there that I was not aware of, and I want to make sure that people are reading the resolution and seeing what this advisory commission truly does. Some of the emails I got today, and Councilmember Campbell referred to some of these things, talked about a concern about delegation of power to unrelated persons. When this is an advisory commission, like many others, Councilmember Campbell mentioned, we have somewhere around 50 advisory commissions. They make recommendations to your elected officials, they don't make policy themselves. We then talk to other constituents, we talk amongst ourselves, and we make a decision based upon what we feel is best for the county. I read emails that assert that this commission and this effort would threaten the principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, when for me, this commission is all about supporting those principles and supporting those principles for everyone. Councilmember Campbell mentioned that he lives in an area where the life expectancy is 10 years younger. A number of us have areas like that in our districts. I have one out on the Key Peninsula. It's the same situation. And we need to look at that from a lens of equity and opportunities for people, in this instance, in a rural area. I had a lot of emails, believe me, I read all of them. I tried to respond to as many as I could. There may be some that came in while we were sitting here that I haven't gotten to, but I saw things that were concerning to me about concerns about the pride flag. I heard, not that that's concerning to me, it was concerning to me that I had people expressing concern in this day and age about the pride flag. I had concerns from people that we might create policies that would promote people into positions that they were not qualified for, that that's not at all what this is about. It's about helping everyone have the same opportunities to be qualified and to have the same successes as everyone else. I heard a concern about involving young people, people 15 to 17-year-olds, and the concern was that they weren't even mature enough to buy alcohol or weapons. And to me, that was shocking, because I thought, goodness, I wish maturity was some sort of a factor in determining whether people could buy alcohol or weapons. We might be in a better situation. And we heard today from some of the folks talking about the issue of disability, how important it is to have young voices. And in this instance, that's part of the diversity that we are looking for. I heard comments about this being a Marxist policy, and I don't even know what to say to that. I had to go back and reread the resolution this morning, because I thought, I thought maybe they were talking about something that I wasn't making the connection. I'm like, gosh, am I thinking about the same resolution these folks are talking about? And I applaud everyone that wrote in, because we want people to be engaged. And there were several people that spoke, for example, a couple of people on Zoom that have clearly spent a lot of time doing their research, and I really appreciate that. We need more of that. But I just want to make sure that the information that they're receiving or that they're vetting is actually accurate and appropriate and is actually the mission of what we're doing. I'm going to end with, it was really interesting that we heard from those young people today about the issues that they're facing as individuals with disability. And I learned some things just because they shared their experience. And that's exactly why we need diverse voices on an equity commission. We need people that can share those experiences through their lens that, you know, when they say it, it makes perfect sense, but it's not something that I would have thought of myself, because I don't have that same lens. It's important that we have this committee to continue to make progress, to make Pierce County better for everyone. Councilmember Campbell said it really eloquently. This is not the time to rest. We are not done. We've made progress, that's great, yay for us. I don't want to rest on our laurels and say, as Councilmember Campbell pointed out, let's just not sit back and say, well, we don't need to deal with this until it's another crisis. Let's avert those crises. Let's make Pierce County better for everyone. We can do better, we need to do better, we should all want to do better, and we should all do better together. And as Councilmember Hitchens said, if you continue to have concerns about some of the things that I mentioned that people have emailed about or other things, let's sit down and talk through that to allay those fears or get you involved, so that you can make sure that that's not what is actually happening and you have a place at the table as well to make sure that the policies are truly better for everyone in Pierce County. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. In closing debate, I want to thank the community for having this discussion with us and everyone of differing opinions who have advised the council and engaged in the conversation. You know, it seems to me, this is a really serious conversation for this council. There's a lot we're working on that really hard this year, including putting in place and really stabilizing our equity initiatives. There's a number of areas that we're working really hard on. Housing affordability, homelessness, a well-rounded approach to public safety, to make sure we have the many tools to respond to the various public safety issues we're experiencing, the opioid crisis, so on. There are a lot of really important issues. Fundational to all of them is how we approach the work in an equitable way so that everyone can achieve prosperity. And, you know, as I listen to the debate tonight, I'm concerned and a bit sad in that it sounds like this is going to be passed by a bipartisan vote tonight. I had hoped better for this body, in all honesty. I am concerned, and I think it's going to pass, so I am hopeful for that. I am hopeful for the work ahead, and I know we're absolutely committed to the work ahead. But I have to be honest. I have to say I am concerned and sad in that it sounds like some are going to hide behind that we are just beginning this work, and that's why we must not pursue it with full gusto going forward. That concerns and saddens me. We have work to do to build our muscles in this area. We are just getting started. Some of the statistics offered by Councilmember Herrera, we are way far away from meeting our goals around a more diverse workforce. We have goals. We are way far from meeting those goals. There is no hidden agenda here. We are really clear-eyed about what we are trying to do. We are trying to create a county where everyone has access to the resources they need to thrive, everyone, and everyone is different. That means how we approach services in rural areas is very different to how we approach services in urban areas. How people with different disabilities need to access opportunity is different than those of us who are privileged to be able-bodied, or those of us who make more income than others have tremendously more access than others who don't have that, despite their best efforts and all of their energy to get educated and skilled and upskilled and re-skilled and retrained. That we pushed around some paper for a couple of years and made a little bit of progress is not a reason to let off the gas. The Equity Review Committee that we impaneled in 2021 had one and only one sole recommendation, one and only one sole recommendation, and that was to do this work in an ongoing, systematic, thoughtful way by developing a permanent commission and equity. That's what this bill is striving to do, is picking up that sole recommendation from that short-term Equity Review Committee. Until we close the gaps on life expectancy, like Vice Chair Campbell speaks to, until we really close the gaps on wage gaps for different communities, homeownership gaps, participation in government, the work isn't over. And why would we stop flexing our muscles? Why would we stop practicing the work with folks who want to lean into the work in this way? I don't know. It's unfortunate that some of the manufactured misinformation is pervasive, and I don't see that lightly. It is concerning. This work is too important to let manufactured misinformation get in the way. And let us please continue to move this work forward. I believe most members on this dais know the intent of the work, know the importance of the work, and please, let's not let manufactured political division get in the way of the work. I think we're better than that. Madam Clerk, with that, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2023-36?
Councilmember Crover?
Nay.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Nay.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote was four ayes and three nays.
On a vote of four ayes and three nays, the ordinance is adopted. We will take a 10-minute recess and come back to conclude the rest of our agenda. We will be in recess If you can note the time for me, the clerk is not back yet. It is 6:49. We are back from our recess at 6:49 PM. We do have, we are now at our next order of business under ordinances. We have proposal number 2023-37 before us. Councilmember Denson, for a motion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move proposal number 2023-37.
It's been properly moved and signed that we adopt ordinance 2023-37. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Thank you. Proposal number 2023-37. An ordinance of the Pierce County Council amending ordinance number 2021-100S2 as amended by ordinance numbers.
Last line, please.
The last line appropriated to items.
Thank you. Mr. Bokey to brief the council.
Thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. This ordinance will amend the biennial budget that was passed. It was originally ordinance 2021-100S2, and that was passed in November of 1921 and has subsequently been amended five times by different supplemental budgets. In this, the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund appropriation is increased by $120,831 to provide funding for a withdrawal management program. There are also several reallocations of miscellaneous current expense items. This was given a due pass recommendation at the September 18, 2023 Rules and Operations Committee, and there is one amendment.
We do have one amendment in front of us. Is there a question of Mr. Bokey before we consider the amendment? I'm not seeing any. Councilmember Denson to move council amendment number one, please.
Thank you. I move council amendment number one.
It's been properly moved and signed that we adopt council amendment number one. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Chair Mello. This amendment will do several things. Essentially, it replaces Exhibit A in its entirety because we had to make a number of changes to meet certain requirements of contracting and whatnot. We also changed some wording. So the staff decided that it would be most efficient and probably the cleanest way to just replace Exhibit A. I'd also call your attention, too, that we're going to change the proviso that was put in to this ordinance on page 12, lines 32 through 34, and that's under the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund. We're replacing the proviso that was put in there in this supplemental with provided $120,831 will be allocated for a non-hospital-based withdrawal management program located in Pierce County with at least five years of demonstrated experience in providing 24/7 walk-in services to all patients ages 13 and older. And then in Exhibit A, there were just a number of other changes with the addition of, just some changes in how the reallocation of miscellaneous current expense money, prevention services money, and in other funds, you see the explanation there for the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund. I am available to answer your questions.
Thank you for explaining the amendment, Mr. Bokey. Are there questions for Mr. Bokey about Amendment One? I don't see any. We'll take a voice vote on adoption of council amendment number one to the supplemental budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The amendment is adopted. Are there any questions for Mr. Bokey before we open this up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. I do see our finance director here, who's been with us for all this time, Director Robinson. Do you have anything to add? Thank you for being with us at this late hour.
Yes, Chair Mello and councilmembers, Gary Robinson with the County Finance Department. We reviewed the amendment that is before you and went to point out that we will be needing to follow the contracting practices that are set forth in the county charter and in county ordinance. So for some of the allocations that are included in the amendment, they are below the threshold of $5,000 in county ordinance, which would enable the allocation to be made as a direct allocation to the entity identified for the appropriation. For the other items that are of a higher dollar amount, we will be within Finance Department in conjunction with Human Services, should the measure be adopted this evening, working to follow a competitive process for determination on the allocation of the funds.
Thank you. And I don't want to spend too much time on this at this time, Mr. Robinson. I think we're going to be spending a lot of time together. I know we're going to be spending a lot of time together over the next 10 weeks, and we're going to be diving into the procurement procedures. But since we have you here and since you made those comments, in the, correct me, please, in the county code, there are different levels of procurement. I'll say this in a layperson's way. For a really high amount, I can't exactly remember the exact number, you have to go through what I would consider a full-blown request for proposals process. You know what I mean by that. I don't know if the public knows what I mean by that, but you have to advertise it, and it has to be open for several weeks, and there's good reason for why we have open competitive procurement. There's something under $5,000 that can be directly appropriated, which there is at least one item in the supplemental that we can do a direct procurement. But then there's items in the middle where you can do what I call a truncated request for proposals process, where you don't have to do weeks and weeks of publication. You can call three vendors, for example. So I consider that a truncated request for proposals process in some instances. That's all laypersons speak about the procurement process. Am I right in understanding there are certain three levels, depending on how much money is being spent?
Yes, Chair. For under $5,000, it can be a direct allocation. $5,000 to $25,000, there is a solicitation or reaching out to three vendors. And over $25,000, there is a need to advertise a request. Now, time period associated with how long the request is out for those within our community who may be able to provide the services can be a shorter period of time or a longer period of time based upon the nature of the solicitation. We have read the ordinance, and in a solicitation, we would be going forward with the functions or the service that is described in the ordinance, because that's what the funds have been authorized, purpose of the funds being authorized.
Thank you. And those procurement levels that you just spoke to are enumerated in the county code?
Yes, they are. There are some procurement levels for other type of purchases that are outlined within state statute. The ones that I described to you are levels associated
Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions, Director Robinson. I don't see any other hands. So we're going to open up a public, we took the vote on adoption of council amendment number one, did we? We did. Thank you. So we have the proposal in front of us as amended. I'll open this up for a public hearing. We will start in chambers. We'll invite you to come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments on the content of the supplemental budget.
Thank you, council. My name is Scott Schuber. I'm the CEO of Metropolitan Development Council. I've been there approximately three months now. Just wanted to share with you guys a little bit of information. We are one of the only withdrawal management facilities in Pierce County, and just wanted to, we provided you guys with some information prior. Just wanted to let you know that in most of the cities in Pierce County, we are seeing clients, and so we are seeing even more people come through our doors. So far, in 2023, we've seen 750 individuals, which is more than what we've seen in the previous two years. So we've been seeing a huge intake need for detox facilities and really looking at whole person health. In Pierce County, we have witnessed a concerning increase in substance use disorder and addiction-related issues. This rise of addiction has resulted in an ever-growing demand for withdrawal management services. We have a significant uptick in residents seeking help for addictions related to withdrawal symptoms. Over the past three years in particular, it's been very challenging, and we've seen even more people come through our doors as a result of COVID, as a result of, you know, addressing different trauma experiences, and really using this as an opportunity to keep the residents of Pierce County safe. So one thing that we're seeing is we're seeing an increased wait time. So by having more beds available into the community, we would see a reduction in wait time. More services will be offered, so more people will be able to access that. And then we will also see additional higher standard of care and compassion for the people that are coming through to receive withdrawal management services. So as you received some information concerning the withdrawal management services, I'm just struck by what was mentioned earlier in some of our conversations as a community, talking about life and death. And this issue is one of life and death. This is really important to be able to address. We reach people at their rock bottom and the place that they are ready for change. And so this is a great opportunity for Pierce County to really invest in this, and I would encourage the council to vote yes on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in chambers wishing to provide comment on the supplemental budget?
Mr. Chair, is the question, would I be able to?
You can come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Alton McDonald, a taxpayer. I live in Pierce County. Would I be able to address the budget itself, not the amendment, but to?
Go ahead. We're allowed to amend this, so I'll grant some leeway. It is about the budget, so go ahead.
If I can speak to the budget but not to the amendment, then I can wait.
Please make your comments now about the budget.
Okay. Inclusively speaking, I know that, correct me if I'm wrong, 80% of the county's budget goes to law enforcement in this community. And we talk about how the people's money's being spent. In the jail, we talk about how inmates are treated when they're arrested and when they're taken inside Pierce County jail. We talk about the equity. We're talking about equity today as related to how individuals are treated because of their race, their ethnicity, or their language. I can tell you, Mr. Chair, that there are some problems in Pierce County as related to the jail, also related to the sheriff department. We want officers who sought to protect and serve.
Please keep it to the budget.
Yes, those are the budget. We're talking about the budget, Mr. Chair, because the budget goes to pay their salaries and derives on the taxpayers' money. So we want officers who are sought to protect and serve our community, who are paid by the taxpayers, to treat each and every citizen that they come in contact with respect and with dignity. We want officers who are honest in their delivery of service. We want officers who will not lie on their report as related to their engagement with citizens that they may have arrested. We want persons or community members who are arrested or in the jail treated with respect and with dignity and provided all the necessary resources while they're in the custody of the Pierce County Sheriff Department. So with the budget that we see that is spent, which is 80%, as I said, and correct me if I'm wrong, on law enforcement, which covers everything, we want to make sure that our citizens that live in Pierce County are treated with dignity and respect wherever they are, whether they're inside the jail or outside of the jail. We also want a court system that is equally protected both of the individuals We also want a court system that is equally protected both of the individual or incarcerated and the individual victim, because when we have a system that delivers service of inequity, then we have a system that is unjust. And as Dr. King Rotley said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, and that's the reason why we want a system that is just and treat all Americans fairly under the color of law. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to provide comment on the supplemental budget? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your remarks.
Hi, I'm Ramona Drake. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health at, excuse me, Metropolitan Development Council. I've been in the industry about 25 years. I've been at this job for about six weeks now. I will tell you that I've seen the face of addiction change. I've seen what's happening in our city right here, and what this young man just spoke to is what we're here to change. We want to be able to help people get the help that they need rather than have to go to jail again and again and again. We're here to make changes. We're here to be agents of change, and we do treat everyone that walks through our doors with the same amount of compassion. We have guests, as many of you have seen, we have guests. We haven't actually been on the unit, but you know that this community needs what we're offering, and I, it's my honor, my privilege to be able to do this right here in this town, my home, to come back here and be able to present, pre, excuse me, these services. You know the word, these services. That's my one minute. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the work that you do. Anyone else in chambers? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody on the Zoom wishing to provide comment on the supplemental budget?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-37, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. At this time, we have a name beginning with O. Please state your name for the record.
General Overnow Eggs, Black Panther Party. So first off, I want to address the young man that was just up there a couple of moments ago. Thank you for your work. Secondly, offer two other options as well. USA Vet for Veterans, you can find them at USAVet.org, as well as a new foundation called Where Do They Go? Secondly, as regarding the budget, I'm just going to go ahead and read a simple quote here that kind of addresses all the points that I'm trying to address because there was multiple different things here tonight. And that will be from our 10-point platform, Point 10. We want land, bread, housing, education, clothing, justice, and peace. In that, equity, that is as well, that that word is not used, but I mean, you were just speaking about equity a moment ago. And, hold on, let me scroll pages here. If you are to reference Blacks Law Dictionary, equity is in its broadest and most general signification. This term denotes the spirit and the habit of fairness, justness, and right dealing.
I need you to keep your comments focused on the supplemental budget, please. We're not talking about the equity bill.
Yes, it is. It is. Equity then can be understood as fairness, justness, and a sense of making things right. So with that being said, making things right, I see that you want to put money toward rehabilitation programs, respects for doing so. Why don't we put money toward tiny homes to help the people get off the streets? A. B. Put money toward mental health programs to give these people health before they choose to self-medicate with those things that leads them to those places ultimately, or further into the jail system that which, of course, the city definitely makes a lot of money from. Or C, to the grave, the where, yeah, y'all would prefer to see them at. We already see that every day as you sweep these camps continuously, and we continually, every Saturday, go out there and feed the people. Now, if y'all are interested in a program that, of course, the city and government and county are completely opposed to, please join us this Saturday. We will be feeding the people and won't be sweeping their camps. All justice, all power.
Thank you.
At this time, we have no other hands, Chair.
Seeing no other hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Council. Are there final remarks by Councilmembers? I'll remark briefly. Thank you for providing the work for the supplemental budget. There's a few items in here. The one item that has my most attention, of course, is the withdrawal management program. I'm grateful to the work of Metropolitan Development Council. Thanks for spending all this time with us this evening. I don't think you were planning on being here this long, but it is a metaphor for the, the amount of time Metropolitan Development Council has been in our community doing good work, and that you are re-establishing and reinvigorating and reinvesting in your withdrawal management or detox center that serves people throughout Pierce County is, we're very grateful. It's very hard to do this work. It's hard to cite these services in our communities. It's hard to do the work. It's hard to resource the work. But that you're willing to double the capacity in this withdrawal management center in Pierce County is just really, really useful, really important work. I really hope and expect that the Finance Department and the Human Services Department can work swiftly to do what they need to do to follow the procurement procedures so that we can get the investment on the ground and that we don't dilly-dally unnecessarily because people's lives are at stake, and we need to get these resources out, out the door as quickly as possible. Customer, Kruger.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to piggyback on your comments in that, thank you for wanting to take on this extra work. It's, it's not sexy work, and, and it really cuts to the heart, and you have to face things every day that are kind of chilling and cut to the heart. So just thank you for stepping up on that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other remarks? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll in ordinance 2023-37?
Councilmember Denson.
Hi.
Councilmember Herrera.
Hi.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Hi.
Councilmember Morrell.
Hi.
Councilmember Campbell.
Excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Kruger.
Hi.
And Councilmember Mello.
Hi.
There was out there a roll call vote of six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. That brings us to proposal 2023-40. Councilmember Hitchens for a motion.
Chair, I'd like to move 2023-40.
It's been properly moved, it's indicated that we adopt ordinance 2023-40. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number 2023-40, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council relating to the Pierce Conservation District amending Exhibit A to ordinance number 201646 by recognizing the City of Edgewood's incorporation into the district.
Last line, please.
The last line is approved by ordinance number 201646 to include the City of Edgewood.
Thank you. Mr. Kruger to brief the Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Council. And I would note that this proposal starts on page 186 of your packets. The Pierce Conservation District is a governmental subdivision of the State of Washington, which is organized under Chapter 8909, oh eight, RCW, to provide for the protection and conservation of natural resources throughout Pierce County and participating cities and towns. The district is responsible for and authorized to carry out conservation projects within the district, including soil conservation, landowner compliance with Clean Water Act standards, water quality improvement projects to protect surface and groundwater, habitat protection and restoration, fish passage barrier removal and replacement, national pollution discharge elimination system support, lake and stream water quality monitoring, low-impact development installations and technical assistance, tree planting, invasive species removal programs, wildfire risk reduction, agricultural and forest landowner assistance, environmental education, and more. In 2016, the Council approved a system of rates and charges pursuant to RCW 8909 on all properties within the Conservation District for a 10-year period. The current rate for residential properties is $10. Currently, rates are collected, and Conservation District services are provided in Buckley, DuPont, Furcrest, Gig Harbor, Lakewood, Milton, Puyallup, Sumner, Stilicum, Tacoma, University Place, Bonning Lake, Ordin, and within the unincorporated county. This proposal would authorize the rate collection and Conservation District services be extended into the City of Edgewood. This proposal received a due pass recommendation at the September 18th Community Development Committee meeting, and I would note that Dana Coggan, who is the Executive Director with the Pierce Conservation District, is here and can take questions from the Council. I would be happy to take questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kruger, I'm sorry if I missed it in your briefing, but this, this is a request to the City of Edgewood. The City Council in Edgewood is making this request to the County Council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Kruger before we open this up for a public hearing? Or Ms. Coggan, since she's here. Customer Herrera.
That was my question.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Kruger. We will open this up for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your remarks. Ms. Coggan.
All right. Good evening, Chair, and good evening, Council. Thank you for having me back again. I feel like we've had some good progress with the Conservation District in the last few years, and it's been great to be able to come to you and share all of our successes with you. And our successes led into all the hard work that has been done for years through the Conservation District, and then the City of Edgewood finally saying, hey, you know what? You have some services that we could really utilize as a community. So the one great thing about the Conservation District is that we are, as I've said before, we're from the government. We're here to help. We do absolutely no regulatory processes. We actually work with community members to help them come up with the best solutions for their properties. And so when I had the distinct honor of a year and a half ago being asked to go to the Edgewood City Council, they said, hey, you know, we've been thinking about getting into this work because of the previous executive director's education and outreach within our community. And we then worked with the council to say, hey, why don't we bring this to the community members? We held a couple of hearings. We actually went out and posted around the, the city. And so this was widely distributed that this was going to be happening, and then the City of Edgewood said, you know what, let's go ahead and let's hold our hearing. So they held that last August, so this has been a year now in the making for us to be before you folks to actually enter into this agreement and to add them into the ILA. So with that, I'm excited to get to work in Edgewood. I'm excited that we actually already did some work in Edgewood just last week. We actually did a training for some of the farmers out there about high-frequency tinsel fencing with the Kiwi Fence Company out there, and so we actually worked with some community members to help fencing for both the sheep in one of the farmer's fields and also for some cattle in that area, too, to keep the animals where they should be and the people where they shouldn't be. I mean, no, wait a minute, yeah. But we did actually have a really great turnout for that event, and so I'm just looking forward to being able to provide more services to Edgewood. One of the great things is, is that with the way that the districts are created, you have to opt in to get our services. So this is the opportunity for the community that has said we would like to opt in, and so we are saying now we will give you those services that you are desiring. So any questions?
We'll finish the public hearing, and then we'll, we'll call you back up because I do see some lights. So let's finish this public hearing. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment on this bill related to the Conservation District in the City of Edgewood? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any members of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-40, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. Seeing no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the Council. Ms. Coggan, I believe there will be some questions for you. We'll start with Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Previous Director. Director Coggan, just for my own education, what is, what does it mean to be in the Pierce Conservation District, both practically and financially, for the citizens of Edgewood? What happens?
So I'm going to go backwards in answering that question. So moving backwards, what it means financially for community members is that if you own a parcel of land, it is a $10 a year fee that you are structured in the rates and charges that will be collected as part of your taxes. And then what you get for that $10 is that you get access to our intellectual knowledge, which is great, but also you get access to the resources that we will come onto site and help you see what's happening on your property. That's both for urban individuals and for rural individuals. So the one thing that I love about the Conservation District is that we are really about serving all community members exactly where they're at. So if you've got a water quality issue in your backyard and you happen to be in the City of Edgewood downtown area, we'll come out and we'll actually help you come up with strategies and management to actually help mitigate any water quality issues that you might have on your property. We'll also help you come up with a planting plan if you'd like to do a rain garden on your property, which will actually increase the value of your property. And then we would work with landowners who also have larger areas where they have maybe a more hobby farm or agricultural areas, so we do work with farmers also. And so that's direct service that we would come onto site. And like I said, we just did a class for community members just this last weekend, and I believe we had, I think, 10 folks sign up and come out to that class.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the service you provide. So your $10 per parcel is whether you have a lot or 100 acres?
There is, yes, and when we go to a bigger spot, there is actually a piece, if we look within the ordinance for some adjustments in there for land size, but, and then we do cost-share opportunities, too. So if you've got a really large piece of property and you have a very big project happening, we will work with you to actually acquire funds from a state level or a local level to help actually do projects on your property, too.
Okay. And just for my own benefit, and maybe some folks, you don't do herd management, do you?
Herd management? Could you ask that a little bit differently? Do we go in and actually move the herd, or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, goats, councilmembers, no.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to go there, but I'm glad you did, so.
I could read your mind there, but no, like.
We've been at this a little while already.
Like elk, like elk.
So we don't do a lot of that kind of ungulate management, so that would actually, we can do fencing that would help prevent them from coming into an area, but we actually do not go out onto properties and help move ungulate populations differently. We will do cattle. We'll help folks manage their cattle populations and manage the manure on that side of things. We don't actually follow elk herds, though, and manage their manure.
Okay. I'll just.
That's a lot of work.
Say they're cattle, and you can come and tell me a different. But anyway, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question on capacity. You're doing so much work, and you're going to have additional scope to do some work. I'm sure you probably wouldn't took this if you couldn't, couldn't do it. So how, how's that looking?
So how capacity is looking is, I think that we are a lean, mean machine in the Conservation District. We definitely do a lot of really great work with the resources we've received. But then the other great thing is, is that this resource value will be utilized to get other grants and other resources coming in. So if we need more people on the ground, this will actually help us get the people on the ground, too, because we'll be able to utilize the funding coming in from this as an offset. And in terms of what we get to use as a district, from the rates and charges, we turn the rates and charges funding into a one-to-two process. So for every dollar we get in from rates and charges, we basically turn that into $2 that goes out into the community. We do have a staff of about 34 right now, and we are looking at possibly bringing on someone for some forestry work. And with the Edgewood process in this, we actually do have capacity that we will be probably bringing on some more AmeriCorps individuals to help out with some of that work, too. So we are also helping out the economy of our region by investing in people.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Customer, Kruger.
Thank you, Chair. I was just curious, I didn't realize, like, in the urban setting, like in Edgewood, I used to live up there, like, a small lot. What service would you offer for just a residential lot, or would you not?
So we do all kinds of services with residential lots. We offer a lot of education and outreach. We actually do provide services to come in, and if you'd like to create a small community garden, either on your own property or in your community, we will provide services to help you establish and plant that garden, pun intended, will help you plant that garden and get your roots growing, yeah. And then for other pieces, as I mentioned, if you have some water issues on your property, we can actually come in and help you mitigate some of those challenges. So if you've got downspouts that are maybe going to the wrong sp- spaces, we can help move that water into a space that gets filtered and then moved in for water quality issues.
And on a larger piece out in the rural area, like if it's a large yard and it is, like, hard pan and the grass doesn't grow, do you give advice to homeowners?
We sure can, yes. So we can help you come up with strategies to actually do maybe even some planting with our no-till drill, that you could put in some cover crops to actually help break up some of that hard pan and actually then turn that into tilling that in and turning it into good resources for that area and creating better soil.
So that you could till it and then roll it and then plant a lawn?
Mm-hmm.
You'd have the topsoil for that?
If that's what you choose. We would prefer maybe not so much lawn, but if lawn is what you want, we'll get you there.
I have a friend that will want your number. Thank you.
Fantastic. You can find me online, right? The Conservation District. You can just Google Pierce Conservation District, and we can connect you.
Thank you for answering our questions, Ms. Coggan. I don't see any other hands at this time. Appreciate the community of Edgewood requesting these services and the Conservation District indicating that they're willing to find the capacity and serve. So thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2023-40?
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell is excused. Councilmember Kruger?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. We are now at Section 9. The rest of our resolutions are on our agenda. We have proposal number 2023-134 in front of us. I'd like to call on Councilmember Morell for a motion for Resolution 2023-134.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for approval, proposal number R2023-134.
It's been properly moved and signed that we adopt Resolution 2023-134. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R2023-134, a resolution of the Pierce County Council granting the Pierce County Executive Authority to execute an agreement titled interlocal agreement between Pierce County and Pierce Transit relating to law enforcement services, and requesting that the Finance Department record said agreement on the county's dedicated interlocal agreement website.
Thank you. Mr. Cox, to brief the council, good evening.
Good evening. Chair Mello, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. The resolution before you would authorize an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and Pierce Transit for the delivery of certain law enforcement services. The interlocal agreement modifies an earlier agreement between the two parties for the purposes of changing the scope of work and establishing a new term for the agreement. The new agreement terminates December 31, 2025. The, this particular agreement will, anticipates that there will be the provision of a public safety chief and an investigator provided through the interlocal agreement. The cost of both is $368,000 under the anticipated timeframe of March 2, 2023 to December 31, 2023. Excuse me, that was for the period January 1 to December 31, 2023. The, the services that you're going to be looking at, there's also a provision for extra duty services. And basically, this would be like a piece rate purchase. These aren't permanently assigned services being, permanently supplied, personnel being supplied by the county, but they can be ordered essentially on a card. You have a detective services, forensic services, marine SWAT, K-9 patrol, K-9 hazardous devices, hazardous devices, air operations, special overtime for deputies, detectives, sergeants, deputies and detectives. And that's also listed in the interlocal agreement. And anyway, like I said, we, the service period, or I didn't say, but the service period, there were three different service periods in the agreement, and March 2 to December 31, 2023 is the current operative service agreement timeframe. And I believe Lauren, Lauren Wallen, who is Chief of Staff to the Sheriff's Department, is available in the room. What's that?
She is. Thank you.
She is. And so I'd like to, anyway, I believe she's here to answer questions you may have. And I'll just point out that the Rules and Operations Committee gave it a due-pass recommendation at the September 18 meeting. And the fiscal impact of the, of this estimated for the entirety of 2023, which, as you know, won't be reflected in at least the last period's portion, would have been $471,000 approximately, but that would have been all passed there. And I'd be happy to turn questions over to, to Ms. Wallen.
Thank you. Ms. Wallen, do you have anything to add on behalf of the Sheriff's Department?
Good evening to members of the council. Again, I'm Lauren Wallen from the Sheriff's Department. I'm going to keep my comments very brief. Just want to thank you for your time and consideration of this, for us to continue our partnership with Pierce Transit. I know that some representatives from Transit have been in attendance on Zoom throughout the meeting. They may have some comments that they want to make, but I just want to thank you for your consideration of this. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here and making yourself available for questions. Are there questions for Mr. Cox or Ms. Wallen? We'll start with Councilmember Herrera.
Chair, I just wanted to ask if this, is this a new thing, or is this a continuation of an agreement before? I thought we had an off-ramp.
Though we have had.
We off-ramped on this.
We have had a partnership with Transit in providing these services for over 15 years. Transit has expressed that they very much have a strong desire to continue that partnership. Unfortunately, as you all know, we have not been immune to the kind of national staffing crisis in law enforcement, and so it has significantly limited our ability to fully staff at the level that Transit would like. What we did was, we worked with their leadership team to identify what were those really key positions that just could not be supplemented by security or some type of other type of positions within that. And that was when it was really kind of narrowed down to these two positions, which was the investigator and then that chief overseeing their operations for both from a law enforcement, but also from a security perspective as well.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the question. Councilmember Morell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Wallen, just to follow up on one of the questions I think I asked during committee, is this will not negatively impact any public safety issues in the other jurisdictions because of shifting FTEs to Pierce Transit?
So this was, again, kind of speaking back to Councilmember Herrera's question, this council was, this contract was, that was previously approved by the council, was for 17 of our law enforcement commission members to be their staffing Pierce Transit police. This has now been cut down to two positions. And these two positions are ones that we have not pulled from Patrol otherwise. They're specifically allocated just for that. Those other 15 positions are all deputies that we took over the last two years from Transit and put them back into patrolling, basically, in all of your districts, whether those are in one of our detachments or in our central patrol operating out of South Hill in Parkland-Spanaway.
Okay. And I appreciate that because someone listening, they would probably go, wow, you know, we've, we've got so many issues in our area. Why are we moving FTEs over to Pierce Transit? So I appreciate you answering that question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Want to highlight the folks doing, I really do appreciate the question, that these folks, the sheriff's deputies who are responding to Pierce Transit calls, they're in the community. They're not, like, at the Pierce Transit headquarters. They're in the community. And, and that's what they're responding to. So it's not like they're responding to some nebulous place when they are responding.
That is correct. We very much are, both our chief and the investigator there, we like to refer to as a working chief position. This is not somebody who's sitting in an office. And if you ever met him, you would know that that is not his personality at all. He's one of our biggest go-getters in the department. They're very much out in the community. They're going out to transit facilities, the bus stops. You know, we saw earlier here in the meeting just great testimony about the importance of having a transit system that is accessible. We also believe it's equally important to have that to be a safe transit system as well. We believe that this is really a key partnership in providing that.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Kruger?
Thank you, Chair. You just made me think of some other questions, in the sense, I'm not against this, but I was just curious, maybe you may not be able to answer, but when I look like grocery stores or businesses that hire a police officer, at least they look like one, why does it, or does Transit utilize that kind of service as well, or do you not? Is that not your?
No, that's a great question. I do know the answer for that. So the folks in Transit, what they do is they have their security officers, but they can only do certain duties within that. And they have a pretty large cadre of that that provides some really key services for them. However, the things that they cannot do are the things that are two positions that they specifically contract with us for, are able to provide. One of that big key positions is in investigations, and we're talking criminal investigations. So if you have somebody who is a passenger on one of the different, whether it's a linklight rail, if you're talking somebody who's on a bus, somebody who's at a transit bus stop and is assaulted, that investigator, that instead of having that incident go and to the pile of all of our other police reports and have them be investigated, their lone investigator can specifically handle that case. Same thing if you have a, one of their coach operators who's assaulted, if we have a theft at one of their facilities, a vandalism. And these are facilities throughout all of our communities, right? I mean, Transit, you know, they're, they're throughout all of Pierce County and providing that service. So that's really what they're providing for that. Transit also does, as discussed, I think Jeff Cox had made comment to this, that they have taken on more of an off-duty model, where when we weren't able to provide those 15 dedicated deputies to them, they transitioned to having officers be paid basically on a kind of off-duty or overtime-type status to really supplement that law enforcement function at their different facilities. So they contract with Puyallup, with Lakewood, just to name a couple of the other, the other departments that provide that for them.
And would it be correct to assume that if there were some sort of an emergency, when you say they are out in the community working, they would, if something really crazy happened, they would be able to go and, and help with that, correct?
It happens almost daily.
Oh, of course.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. Thank you, Ms. Wallen, for making yourself available to answer our questions. This is a public hearing on Resolution 2023-134. Any member of the public wish to provide comment? We'll start in chambers. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments.
And for the record, my name is Alter McDonald. I'm a taxpayer resident of Pierce County. I think this is a waste of taxpayers' money to have these two deputies working for Pierce Transit or any kind of agreement. And the reason why I say that is because of the very fact that if there's an emergency, 911 is dialed right away. These two officers are going to get a cushy job, pretty much. And if there was an off-ramp to get away from providing services to Pierce County, why are we continuing the services? Criminal investigation, if there's a theft, there is a murder, police is going to be called, a detective is going to respond. They're going to be out there, coordinate the area and do what they need to do to get to the perpetrators, right? So why are we doing this? Just like in King County, they hire officers, folks who are from communities who can arrest, they have handcuffs, they have a way to get in touch with the police. Why don't Pierce, Pierce Transit does it, does the same thing? They don't need any law enforcement officers. The law enforcement officers are already there. 911, the driver can call 911. Why do we need this? And who will be paying for these services? Will it be the taxpayers or will it be Pierce Transit? $368,000 is a lot of money. So we should be able to spend the people's money as if they say it was our money. And so I don't believe that this is necessary. If there was an off-ramp to get away from this kind of agreement, it should be now and not later. 911 is right there. They can call, get the response, get the, the service that they need, not just two officers over here sitting there in some office, just not doing anything. And if you have, if you have an incident of, of crime, of six incident, now they only have one criminal investigator. That means we probably need two or three more to address the other crime that was committed within Pierce Transit. So there's an issue here, and someone is not telling the truth about what these officers are going to be doing. And let's look at it really before we commit ourselves to this particular continued agreement with Pierce Transit, because when we spend the people's money, think about how we're spending it and if we are spending it correctly, as if we're spending our own money. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers? Not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any members of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-134, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the committee. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? I'll just remark briefly. Thank you to the Sheriff's Department for rolling with the times. And over time, based on available resources, this contract and relationship with Pierce Transit has been adjusted significantly. As Chief of Staff Wallen has noted, Pierce Transit has brought more non-badged officers, but still security personnel, but they're non-badged, non-gunned employees that can do the vast majority of the work. Not every call needs a badge and a gun. Pierce Transit has figured out how to provide security services in a way that does not always need a badge and a gun. But when we do need that skill and certification, this is the relationship that is in place to do that when, when needed. And, but it's been, it's been very much scaled back to just this personnel in this contract because of available, largely because of available resources. I also want to just note that, like we keep saying, not every response needs someone with a badge and a gun. And that is why Pierce Transit applied to our Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund and received a significant investment that we approved just a couple of weeks ago to get a behavioral health team of responders. So we're funding a behavioral health team of responders so that folks who are interacting with the Pierce Transit system, maybe unwell and need access to services and be guided to services, that behavioral health team is going to be able to respond to that call and, and, and get that, that person to a better place. That's an example of an alternative crisis response that we are funding and that adds to the, to the cadre, cadre of services here to keep the system safe. So everybody who uses the system and works in the system can be safer. So I'm grateful that we've designed these alternative crisis response systems, but that the Sheriff's Department is still making themselves available in those instances when that resource and skill is required. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2023-134?
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell is excused. Councilmember Kruger?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to proposal R2023-135. Councilmember Herrera for a motion?
Chair, I move proposal number R2023-135 for approval.
It's been properly moved and signed that we approve Resolution 2023-135. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R2023-135, a resolution of the Pierce County Council granting the Pierce County Executive Authority to execute an agreement titled interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the City of Furcrest for the provision of law enforcement chief services, and requesting that the Finance Department record said agreement on the county's dedicated interlocal agreement website.
Thank you. Mr. Cox, good evening again.
Yes. I apologize, Councilman. Right now, I'm having my computers. If I can indulge you for just a second. Hold on, just apologize. Hopefully, I get there in just a second. My...
Ms. Wallen?
Here we go. I've got, I've got to it. Chair Mello, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. The City of Furcrest desires to enter into an agreement with Pierce County whereby the county, through the sheriff, will provide law enforcement and related administrative services to the city and its inhabitants by assigning an interim contract chief to serve as the city's police chief. The contract terminates on September 26, 2023, and may be extended up to 30 days maximum if mutually agreed upon by both parties. Beginning on the first day of assignment of the contract chief to the city, the cost for services shall be $20,360 per month for a total of $61,000 for three months. In the event this agreement is extended, the cost for services shall be subject to renegotiation. The, and this received a due-pass recommendation from the Rules and Operations Committee on September 18. September 18. And with that, I'd also note that Ms. Wallen is available, as she was for the last ILA, and I'm sure she'd be happy to answer questions, and I'd be happy to answer questions as well. And I apologize for the glitch there.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Wallen, what do you have to add on behalf of the Sheriff's Department?
Good evening again, Lauren Wallen with the Sheriff's Department. It's just another reminder, I oversee our contracts and our grants for the Sheriff's Department. This is another one of those contracts where we had the folks from Furcrest come to us with an urgent need. Their longtime chief was retiring, and they had done a large candidate search, had selected a candidate, and then the week that that candidate was set to start as their new chief, he decided to not take the position. So suddenly they were left without a chief and asking for us to help them while they started a new search for another chief. What's important to note with these contracts, and this is both for this interlocal agreement to provide that interim, just three-month-long chief for Furcrest and also for Transit and contracting with us for those positions, they pay what it costs for that person to be in that job. So that means covering their salary and benefits, covering things like their fleet costs, their equipment, their training. They are, the City of Furcrest is taking the financial burden for that position for those entire three months and all costs associated with that position. Same thing with Transit for theirs as well. So again, this is just for a short three months to provide supervision and leadership for the Furcrest, the city and their police department while they undertook that candidate search. They have already completed that, and their new chief starts tomorrow.
Very exciting. Thank you, Ms. Wallen. Are there questions for Mr. Cox or Ms. Wallen before we open this up for a public hearing? I don't see any. Thank you, Ms. Wallen. Thank you, Mr. Cox. This is a public hearing on proposal 2023-135. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution? Not seeing anybody in chambers. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
For any members of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-135, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members?
I'll briefly remark, thanking the Sheriff's Department for stepping in in this way. I represent the community of Furcrest here on the county council, and I know the community of Furcrest, we're sad to see our previous chief, longtime previous chief retire. All good things come to an end, but that the Sheriff's Department was able to step in here and provide these critical leadership services during this transition is incredibly valuable, and we're very grateful. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on 2023-135?
Councilmember Morrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Grover?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution 2023-136. Councilmember Herrera for a motion.
Chair, I move proposal number R2023-36 for approval.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2023-136. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R2023-136, a resolution of the Pierce County Council granting the Pierce County Executive Authority to execute an agreement titled interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the City of Tacoma for the provision of services and facility of the Pierce County Jail, and requesting that the Finance Department record said agreement on the county's dedicated interlocal agreement website.
Thank you. Mr. Cox, last one for you this evening.
Yes. Chairman of the members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. The proposal before you would, is another interlocal agreement. This one's between Pierce County and the City of Tacoma. It's a negotiated agreement to execute the provision of jail services for a period of five years in an amount not to exceed $9,600,000. The background on this is on March 12, 2020, the Pierce County Sheriff's Department Corrections Bureau, in response to confirmed cases of coronavirus in Pierce County and the potential impact of the virus upon the inmate populations, implemented new booking policies, limiting bookings to misdemeanor offenders to reduce the risk of transmission of COVID-19. The impacts of the pandemic upon misdemeanor bookings have made it difficult to develop data that will inform discussions of a new jail services contract. As a result, Pierce County requested that the city agree to extend the current jail services contract upon the same terms and conditions for a period of one year through December 31, 2021. In January 2022, for the same reasons, the city and Pierce County agreed to a one-year extension from January 22 through, 2022 through December 31, 2022. In January of 2023, the city manager authorized a six-month extension of jail services contract to allow the city and county additional time to develop a new jail services contract. The proposed five-year contract from July 1, 2023 through December 31, 2028 is needed for the city to book and house misdemeanor offenders for violations of the Tacoma Municipal Code. This particular ILA was considered by the Rules and Operations Committee on September 18 and received a due pass recommendation. It's also, as you might imagine, recommended for passage by the Sheriff's Department, and the fiscal impact would be $9,896,000 over five and a half years. And I'd be happy to answer questions, but as you know, we have the Chief of Staff of the Sheriff's Department in the room with you in the form of Lauren Wallen.
Thank you. We also have Corrections Bureau Chief Jackson with us. We also see her avatar in our Zoom room. She's in two places at once. We know she's pretty amazing, but I didn't realize she was that amazing. Chief Jackson, Chief of Staff Wallen, anything to add on behalf of the department?
Again, Lauren Wallen, the Sheriff's Department. I want to thank you again for all your time this evening. I sure appreciate it. Again, very brief comments on this. This is an extension of a longstanding agreement. This is a contract between the City of Tacoma and the county for the provision of the booking services and also for holding for folks who are in misdemeanor-type crimes. This is just extending that long-term partnership, making a very small change, that change being allowing them to use a, to contract with secondary facilities for holding folks. So if we are at capacity from the jail, again, mostly because of limited staffing, but God forbid if there's another pandemic-type situation that we have to deal with. So it is allowing for the City of Tacoma to utilize secondary services for another facility to hold those folks. And the City of Tacoma came to us with a request for that.
Thank you, Ms. Wallen. Are there questions for Mr. Cox or Ms. Wallen before we open this up for a public hearing? Councilmember Morrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Wallen, just on average, how many cells does Tacoma have at any given time? Is there a minimum, maximum?
I'm getting invited to the podium, Chief Jackson, who is going to start Chief of Corrections Bureau. Come on up.
I knew we'd get Chief Jackson up here.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Chief Jackson with Pierce County Sheriff's Department overseeing the Corrections Bureau.
Okay. My question is, with City of Tacoma, what is kind of the average that they have in our jail at any given time?
Right. So that's kind of not an easy question to answer right now because of the fact that for the past three years running, we have been really predominantly housing individuals who are incarcerated for serious assaults against people. In the past, the contract that we had that Chief of Staff Wallen had spoken about, there were a particular amount of beds that were reserved. They tried to keep a full unit, which was 84 beds. We have been able to change that to be able to house individuals that are just coming in to be able to take care of situations that they are arrested for and seen before the Tacoma Municipal Courts. And then if they're needing to stay in our facility, or if they're needing, excuse me, to stay incarcerated, then that is when the secondary contract that was just spoken about would kick in. So I'm going to tell you that if it's strictly for a Tacoma misdemeanor crime, I would anticipate as it first kicked off, probably, you know, in overnight settings, no more than 20 individuals would be there. That would be just to start that out, because they would just go, they would be housed for arraignment, and then after they've been arraigned, you know, one of three things is going to happen. If bail is set and they're able to maintain or reach that bail to be released, then they would be able to post that in our facility so that they could be released back to the community that they came from. In the event that they weren't able to hold bail, maybe it was individuals that were challenged with mental health, you know, holds that we needed to make sure that, you know, they're well taken care of. Those individuals would need to stay in custody, maybe without, you know, on a no-bail hold. Once they've been arraigned, they would then be safely transported to the secondary facility that was talked about. Or, you know, the third phase would be if it was somebody that was coming in that was not prolific offender or something along those lines, that we just needed to make certain who we had, you know, fingerprints, photographing, and we could give them a court date and safely release them in the community without spending any time at all, we would be able to do that as well.
Okay. Thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open this up for a public hearing? Thank you, Chief Jackson. Thank you for making yourself available. Thank you, Chief of Staff Wallen. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We'll start in chambers. If anyone wishes to provide comment on this interlocal agreement related to jail services with the City of Tacoma?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Alton McDonald. I'm a taxpayer and resident of Pierce County. As I stated earlier about treatment of individuals who are arrested by Pierce County or Tacoma police officers, the services that are rendered to those individuals while they are in Pierce County Jail is a concern to me. There are many complaints that I've received of how these inmates are treated, mistreated. I've come to this council, I've articulated my position, I've articulated these issues, this council listen. I'm not here to change your mind. I can't change your mind because outside of here, you already made a decision on the things that you're going to pass and the things that you're not going to pass. So coming here to speak won't sway you in any way, but at least, the least I can do is to let you know what is really going on. And if you don't act upon the information or to seek further from Chief Patty Jackson, then it's on you. I've done my due diligence by informing you, so you cannot say I didn't know. Absence of knowledge is ignorance. Therefore, I'm saying again to the council that if you would do further inquiry into the issues that I'm raising to you today, that I've done in the past, today, as it relates to how inmates, citizens from our community are mistreated in the county jail when they're there. And most often times when they file their complaint, it's always, always 100% unsubstantiated. Always 100% unsubstantiated. When the officers know, that works in the jail, know what they've done to the inmates who are in there. But the inquiry always come back. So if you have a fox investigating himself, the fox will say to you, "I did not eat those chickens," while he's laughing, looking at you with a response. "I did not eat those chicken." If the fox investigates himself, it will come back unsubstantiated. If the sheriff department investigates itself, the jailers unsubstantiated, while you have citizens who are saying, "I was mistreated while I was in Pierce County Jail," then the county should be sued, and then they have to write a check. It's not coming from Chief Patty Jackson's bank account or Euro Bank account, it's coming from the people's money, the insurance that the county have, our taxes, my taxes, or paying for misdeed of officers who work for the county jail. That's not okay. He's wrong. It's about accountability. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Not seeing any other members of the public. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room on this and your local agreement?
For any members of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-136, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. No hands. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there any final remarks by council members? Not seeing any. This received a due pass recommendation at the Rules and Operations Committee, able to ask our questions along the way about this, and I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll on 2023-136.
Councilmember Campbell is excused. Councilmember Grover?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morrell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that did not appear on today's agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. We ask you to state your name, if you'd like it on the record, and address all your comments to the chair. I'll start with those in chambers. Is there anybody in chambers wishing to participate in Community Forum?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Alton McDonald. I'm a citizen and taxpayer, living in Pierce County. March 3, 2020, there was a murder that occurred over by Osmer. Manny Ellis was murdered, murdered. His life was snuffed out of him by law enforcement officers who paid to protect and serve, but because he was a black man, they killed him. Yes, they did. Now, we have five, there were five officers there, five from Tacoma Police Department, who they say, quote-unquote, exonerated. If you were present, you are culpable. You did nothing to stop the others from murdering Mr. Ellis, so you are part of that crime. We do the same thing for bank robbers. We do the same thing for drug dealers when they're caught. Why don't we do the same thing for officers? There were Pierce County Sheriff's Deputy that was there to understand. Was he charged? I don't believe so, but Sheriff Ed Troyer was in TV lying to the public about this incident. Sheriff Troyer know that he was lying and continuing to be a liar, but continuing to have a badge and a gun. Sheriff Troyer, yes, Mr. Chair, this is not okay in our community. It's not okay. Now, to make matters worse, there's a process right now going on to select a jury for the trial for these three officers that have been charged with second degree and first degree murder of Mr. Ellis. I am angry, not because he's a black man, but because he was a human being whose life was snuffed out of him, and the city tried to cover it up until Mr. George Floyd. Then he came out. What happened to Mr. Ellis? We didn't know. They covered it up. Yes, they did, but it came out. Sheriff, I think this Pierce County, you paid some money to the family, didn't you? Yes, I did, I think you paid some money. It was my tax dollars. I wasn't a deputy. My tax dollars pay for a crime that officers are committing, should be criminal on the face. It's not okay. You should be upset to have bad officers serving our community. You should be upset and angry at them. We want good officers with badge and gun. Don't tarnish your badge. Once you tarnish your badge, you become a criminal, not worthy to have a badge and a gun anymore. The only difference between you and the criminal, the criminal doesn't have a badge, but you do as a law enforcement officer, but you're a criminal with a badge and a gun. It's not okay. So now the county is saying, the trial is next week. They're saying to come to the trial, Mr. Chair, you have to log into a QR code. They want to track who's coming to the trial. This is not okay. Please tell the prosecutor, the folks who are running the court, it's not okay. They should have an overflow room for a citizen of this community who have a vested interest in the outcome of this trial.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
This court should provide that, Mr. Chair. Please, I'm asking you. Please, I'm asking you. An overflow room for interests, for citizens of a vested interest in this trial, because we want justice.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time.
Anybody in the Zoom room wishing to participate in Community Forum?
For any members of the public wishing to provide public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. At this time, we have two hands, Chair. First name, or, excuse me, first person, last name, ending in Hamilton. Please state your name for the record.
Eddie Hamilton, living in Graham. And I only want to say that may the work that we've done tonight be pleasing in the sight of the Lord, and may he keep you safe as you go home tonight. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ashley Kay. Please state your name for the record. Next, we have Ashley Kay. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Ashley Curdie, and I'm in Council District One. I just, I know it's a really long, really, really long day for you guys, having been in this meeting for five hours. I popped on at 3:00, and I've been in this meeting with you guys the whole time. And I just wanted to speak into the fact of the representation that you guys got to see tonight, you know, so many people coming out, you know, over an issue. And honestly, I just am sitting here, you know, I was just really chewing on it as I myself had a hard time finding the information on this and, you know, wondering how, how did I not know, you know, things that were going on and, you know, seeing the history of things. I know when you're so deep into it, it's obvious, you know, you're really, you've been in it for so long that, you know, everything is clearer to you. And so how do we make it clearer to the public? You know, how could the information been clearer, easier to find, you know, easier to understand? There is a, you know, I enjoy government. I am just a homeschool mom. You know, the amount of time I've been on here, I have been homeschooling my kids, taking them to soccer practice, making dinner, you know, all of those things while trying to also participate in my local government. So how do we make it easier, you know, for the general public to gain this information, to be able to understand it? Yes, I can read through, you know, the information that's online, but it really takes a lot to chew on that. So how do we break that down? So just, just kind of throwing that out there as a challenge, I guess. How do we get more community involvement? How do we make it easier to understand the things that are before you all so that you guys can represent, you know, our thoughts on those things and do a better job on your end when you're getting the information from us, but when we have information that's accurate? Because to be honest, the way I came into seeing one of the things that you were voting on tonight was because I saw an inflammatory post about it, and what that did was drive me to want to find the truth about it and see what was fact and what was fiction in the inflammatory post that I saw. And so I know not everyone has that drive, but I know everyone is affected by these things, and not everyone can sit in a meeting here for five hours or even the few hours it took to get time to be able to speak on the motion that they were there to talk about. Not everyone has that time in the middle of the day or has time to devote to, you know, researching. So just kind of wanted to throw that thought out there. How do we make it easier? When I was doing the research for the Equity Committee and was looking at the LACI Equity Committees, some of their findings that they've already found, they put out with the LGBTQI, you know, their research they did with them, one of the things that they said at one of their meetings was that this generation right now, they don't read. You know, that was one of the things they said. They need more information in front of them, and one of the things is that they don't read. So just, I don't know, can, is there a way to get creative? You know, can the council get creative to get that information out there, especially in a unbiased way? Give us the facts to be able to determine our own conclusions on things and to do it in a way that just so everyone can participate in local government.
Thank you.
There are no other hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, we'll close the Community Forum portion of our meeting. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the things that we heard briefly. I know the hour is late, but some important requests by some community members. Start with the first. Happy to speak additionally, Mr. McDonald offline, to hear more about your ideas about access, just in particular about access to the Manny Ellis trial. There is a, there is a banner on the county website, the homepage of the county website, and it leads you directly to a live stream, so that, that is the overflow. Current plan is making live streaming as easy as possible for the public. Happy to talk to you offline about other ideas within our capacity of room availability. But I do want to point out on the homepage of the county, there's a banner that one can click and track the information. This is something of great importance to many in our community, and there's a way to get to live stream information when it gets to that point of the trial. Other members of the community brought up better access to the work that we do on the public's behalf. We do that through many different ways. One is boards and commissions. We had a robust debate about a board and commission at this meeting today, but accessing our boards and commissions and having diverse folks represent the community and being more involved in boards and commissions is certainly a chief strategy of the county in terms of making local government more accessible and hearing the voices of more people. So I encourage folks to figure out how to join, apply to become a board or commission, or participate in our board and commission meetings. All of them meet at different times throughout the month, pretty easily accessible on the county website, one of the many boards and commissions on different topics. There's ways to participate in their meetings. Those are open public meetings as well. That's one real way we strive to make local government more accessible is through our boards and commissions. The other way is our Office of Communications here in the office of the county council is working really hard to bring new tools online and encourage you and anyone to email your council member, and we will help you get linked up with our newsletter that we send out twice a month. We have a podcast that we've designed and get out periodically, and there's other tools of communication that we are bringing online, and those are ways that we use to get information out to the community. They're well-read and well-used, but we always want more folks to have access to the communication tools that we are putting effort in providing. So please email us, email your council member, and they know how to get ahold of our communications team and get you signed up for those communication pieces. With that, are there any other business or announcements by council members? Councilmember Hitchens, we have your in-district meeting tomorrow evening.
Thank you. And for anyone who's made it five-plus hours, we are starting at 6:30, not 3:00 tomorrow, so it won't be as long a meeting. And I only have three agenda items, which for me is, you should all give me a gold star, because I think the last time was 7:00. So just, it will be in DuPont. It will be streamed and available via Zoom like normal, but if you are in and around the DuPont area at 6:30 at City Hall tomorrow, we will be meeting, and the topic of the day is transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Thank you for preparing for us. Look forward to seeing you in DuPont tomorrow evening. Any other announcements or business by members? I'm not seeing any. Ms. Long, any other business for council this evening? Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned. Have a safe night, everybody.